Was that their property?
It was the same person who parks that property and then the...
Oh, I didn't realize that.
I think the same person.
Okay, it is the cheapest ice cream in town. The regular meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission, today is Tuesday, July 23rd. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up on the agenda, we have roll call. Welcome to our new Community Development Director. Ms. Schluto, could you please call the roll?
Buckler.
Yes, here.
Muirad.
Present.
Richardson. Campbell.
Present.
Kepner.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Trotto.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Kapalansky.
Here.
All right, thank you. Moving on, next is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda?
I do.
Okay.
You have the chamber meeting is listed as the fourth Friday, I think. It's the second Wednesday at 5:30 PM.
Okay. Any other changes or additions? Ms. Schmidt?
Um, since we have a couple new faces here, would it be appropriate at this time, instead of at the end of the meeting, to have them introduce themselves and maybe tell us a little bit about themselves?
That's fine, if the Commission chooses to do that, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll add that then before elections, introductions.
Point five.
Yeah. Okay, we'll do that right before elections.
Okay.
And anything else? Or motions to approve the amended agenda?
I move to approve the amended agenda.
Support.
Ms. Schluto, could you call the roll, please?
Buckler?
Yes.
Muirad?
Yes.
Richardson. Campbell?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes, thank you.
And I'm sorry, who was that supporting?
I did.
And for the record, Mr. Richardson is out of town today, so he will not be here this evening. Moving on to the meeting minutes from June 25th, any changes to the minutes? Or motions?
Uh, Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
There's one comment on the bylaws on page, item five. Mr. Smith stated previous planning commissions had regular work sessions when deemed necessary.
Okay.
We didn't do it every month, and maybe I didn't say that, but that is actually what it should be. We decide when we want it.
That sounds good. Anything else? Motions to approve?
I motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Ms. Schluto, could you call the roll, please?
Buckler?
Yes.
Muirad?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Okay, next we have communications. There were two items that were placed before the Commissioners this evening. One was related to a couple different items that were on the agenda, the proposed rezoning and the Mogo bike stations, and then a general comment on parking minimums. Then we also had a petition referencing the design overlay that is not on the agenda this evening, but we'll add that to the record. Was there any additional communications?
Not at this time.
Okay. Moving on, we've come to citizen comment. Any citizens that have comments for items that are not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. We'll ask you to sign in on the sheet there provided at the end of the table, next to Ms. Schluto, and then also to state your name and address. As a reminder, we will not engage you in any discussion. We ask you to keep your comments to four minutes or less. Does anyone want to comment on an item not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close citizen comment then, and move on to our first order of business on our amended agenda, which is introductions. We have two new faces with us this evening, our newest Planning Commissioner and our new Community Development Director. Ms. Schluto, do you want to start with introductions? Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, I'm very excited to be here. My name is Erin Schluto. This is my second day, so please take it very easy on me. So I've been, I've been working with McKenna for the past almost four years. I've been an associate planner with them. I've worked in several different communities throughout southeastern Michigan, anything from plan developments, from vacant agricultural land to a full-scale residential development, to a lot of redevelopment in dense urban communities. I live 2.4 miles away. I am so excited to be here in Berkeley and to continue all the wonderful work that has been going on the past few years.
Thank you, welcome. Commissioner Campbell?
Hi, everyone. My name is Jeff Campbell. I moved down here, I'm from Flint originally. I moved down here to go to law school, met my wife, and before we got married, we bought a house on Royal. I've been there 15 years. And prior to, so I was a lawyer for several years, then I went back to school for a master's in urban planning, obtained that, and then got a job as an intern to start at the city of Hazel Park, and I have served as the Planning and Economic Development Director of the city of Hazel Park for the last seven years.
Great, welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, we have elections for Chairperson, Vice-Chairperson, and Secretary. Any nominations? Ms. Buckler?
I nominate Ms. Kapalansky as Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'll support that.
Any other nominations?
You're doing a fine job.
Ms. Schluto, could you call the roll on that motion?
Buckler?
Yes.
Muirad?
Yes.
Richardson? I'm sorry. Campbell?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chair?
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Buckler?
I nominate Mr. Smith as Vice Chair, to continue in his role so aptly served.
Support.
Anyone else? Nominations? You're good with that, Mr. Smith?
I'm good with it.
We didn't ask you if it was good with it.
That's true.
You didn't get a choice.
Just wait till we nominate the Secretary.
Could you call the roll, Ms. Schluto?
Buckler?
Yes.
Muirad?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
And lastly, we have Secretary. I did touch base with Commissioner Richardson, and he indicated he was still interested. If anyone wants to throw that out?
So Ms. Kapalansky?
Yes.
I nominate Mark Richardson for Secretary.
Okay.
Second.
Anyone else? Ms. Schluto, could you call the roll on that?
Buckler?
Yes.
Muirad?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Okay, now we move on to appointments. We have a couple different liaisons we need to appoint to various boards and commissions. I would be happy to take the City Council appointment as the Chair. Anyone else want the DDA or the Chamber?
I'll continue as Chamber.
Okay.
I'll stay on as DDA.
And if nobody else is interested, Mr. Richardson also said he'd like to do the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Perfect.
Everyone is okay with those appointments?
Uh huh.
Yes.
Do we need to call a roll on that?
No.
Okay, then we're good.
Per view.
Okay, that brings us to our presentation for this evening of the Downtown Master Plan by Lakota Group.
My name is Rachel Smith. I am a project manager at the Lakota Group, and I'm here to run you through the downtown plan that we have been working on since September of last year. So, see if my clicker is working. Nope. Seems promising. Wait, is that me or you? No, that's you.
Point it at the computer where the stick is.
Computer. There you go. The back button works, so we'll go with that. So, why Downtown Plan? The goal of the plan is to really create a guiding policy document for downtown Berkeley, a blueprint to position it for additional growth. We want revitalization that maintains the authentic character of downtown Berkeley, and that can serve as a community-backed vision, so that the DDA and the city can advance projects and initiatives that align with the plan. You all have copy of the master plan in front of you, just want to kind of run through the way that it's organized. It starts with a brief introduction, and then there's three core chapters. The first chapter, setting the stage, goes through some background information related to the plan, other planning processes that relate to this, some information about the DDA, as well as community input and the outreach process throughout the plan. And then Section 2 is really the bulk of the plan, that's centered around four goals that we'll talk about later. And then Section 3 is implementation, so it goes through implementation actions and then a strategy matrix. So as I mentioned, this process started in September. We started with some fieldwork. We had stakeholder listening sessions with business owners, residents, local, you know, people in the community, community leaders, and then we had a community open house, as well as a field office. Following those, we put together the State of the Downtown Report, which summarized everything we heard from folks about what they wanted to see in the plan, and what they felt like the challenges and opportunities were in downtown Berkeley. The second phase of the project was the technical plan, so we met with the task force that was assembled for the plan, and talked through the visions and goals and objectives that they wanted to see as a part of this plan. And then from that, we put together a number of concepts that were presented at the second community open house, as well as at a field office the following day, and through an online survey. And then with the feedback we got from the open house, we started to draft a downtown plan, which brings us into Phase 3, which has been a series of revisions and drafts to the plan. We presented two weeks ago to the DDA Board, as well as City Council members, and hosted a strategic planning session with the DDA, hosted a workshop forum at the Street Art Festival, and now we are here, talking to you all before, you know, approval by the Planning Commission and City Council. So throughout the project, there was a robust community engagement effort. We had both in-person and electronic formats to really get engagement from residents, business owners, city staff, DDA Board, leaders throughout the community. The in-person process, as I mentioned, included stakeholder interviews, two open houses, and two field offices, which reached over 150 individuals. And then there were two online surveys, which collected over 300 responses. Some opportunities and challenges that were identified early in the process for downtown Berkeley, opportunities include the fact that it has this wonderful eccentric small-town charm, and there's a number of longtime business owners, as well as emerging business owners, that make downtown great. There's development potential at key sites. The growth in nearby communities has really brought additional attention to Berkeley, and the fact that you have such strong schools and a family-friendly vibe is continuing to attract young people. Some challenges that were identified was the, the shape of the downtown makes it difficult to walk from one side or the other. Traffic speeds also discourage walking. The nodes of activity, both on 12 Mile and Coolidge, feel disconnected, both physically because of the shape of the downtown, and due to a lack of consistent streetscape. There is an absence of a public gathering space in downtown, which was something that was identified in the 2008 master plan and continues to be something that the community wants in their downtown. And there's a perception that some residents are hesitant to change, and that too much is changing too quickly for some folks. So then we're going to dive into the, the plan. So there's four key goals that the plan is centered around. The first goal is revitalize downtown Berkeley with a diverse mix of uses, so focuses on land use. The second goal is revitalize downtown Berkeley's physical character with a focus on urban design. The third goal is to enhance downtown Berkeley's mobility and parking systems. And then the fourth goal is to strengthen Berkeley's retro cool market position, so really business development focus. So I'm going to go through each of the goals and some of the strategies. So within the document, each goal includes some context that was part of the State of the Downtown Report and gives, you know, context to the, you know, land use, urban design, whatever it is, as well as strategies to help advance this goal. So for Goal 1, revitalize downtown Berkeley with a mix of uses, there's three key strategies that focus on the three character areas of Berkeley. The character areas were developed, I think, as part of the design guidelines document. So in Gateway West, encourage appropriate infill development and building reuse. In the downtown core, to preserve and expand retail and entertainment. And then in Gateway South, to encourage commercial and office uses between Catalpa and 11 Mile. So we looked at a number of different potential redevelopment scenarios, just looking at what land use could look like, and what redevelopment might look like, and put together kind of a land use framework that plays into some of the zoning strategies that are coming in at the end. So Goal 2, invest in, reinvest in downtown Berkeley's physical character. So the first strategy was to invest in streetscape improvements along 12 Mile and Coolidge, promote programs that enhance storefront and building improvements, that's really building on the design guidelines, making sure that those get applied, that there's a design review process, so that facade improvements and new construction can really enhance that character of downtown Berkeley. Incorporating elements that reinforce downtown Berkeley's aesthetic, mid-century aesthetic throughout the district. Integrating more green in downtown Berkeley, both through green infrastructure and additional landscaping. And then investing in a public gathering space in downtown Berkeley, which is something that we heard again and again that people want to see. So we looked at, I think, five different locations where there could be investments made in a public gathering space, and we got folks' feedback on what they thought were the concepts that they liked most. Here we go. So Goal 3 focuses on enhancing downtown Berkeley's mobility and parking systems. There's three strategies that focus more on the larger mobility, so implementing traffic calming measures and other transportation enhancements to promote pedestrian safety in downtown Berkeley. Improving downtown Berkeley's bicycle networks and introducing micro-mobility options, such as the scooters and the Mogo stations, which, you know, we're talking about, a lot of that's happening. Enhancing downtown Berkeley's transit service and connecting different modes through transit nodes. So where there is transit service, trying to create these nodes of activity where there can be more connections. And then into the parking recommendations, implement wayfinding and identification signage program for downtown parking facilities. We worked with Sam Schwartz, who did a parking study, and they found throughout the process that there's not a lot of clarity from community members on which parking lots are owned by the city, and where they can park and where they cannot park, so wayfinding and signage would help address some of those issues. Updating downtown parking regulations, so both looking at updating the regulations and potentially including parking maximums was one thing that we looked at. Establishing a downtown shared parking district was something that we heard from the community, that it's so frustrating that you have all these spaces, but they're, you know, just designated to one business, and if there was some sort of a shared system, which is common in communities, to have this shared parking district, it would really make it easier to find parking in downtown closest to where you need it. And then improving the curbside environment, so really making streetscape improvements so that it feels more walkable, so that you could park somewhere and walk somewhere nearby, and feel like you don't need to get back into your car, because it's, it's safe wherever you're going to park. The fourth goal, strengthen Berkeley's retro cool market position. So Berkeley already has this wonderful character of this mid-century aesthetic, and really want to leverage that. So there's three goals, or three strategies, core strategies for that. The first is to focus on cool comfort dining, so casual, family-friendly places that, you know, they're kid-friendly, but they're not like kid-exclusive, they're welcoming to the whole community. Focusing on eclectic and artisanal retail, which you already have, so really building on that base, and having, expanding and attracting more businesses of that type that play into the retro cool aesthetic. And then focusing on experience and entertainment. So this really ties to the retail as well, finding more additional opportunities to have experiential retail, more reasons for people to come out at night and do things in downtown Berkeley, which was something that we heard from a lot of folks. And then to support those, we talk about expanding the toolbox of business incentives, such as rent abatement, to attract the type of businesses that you're interested in attracting. And then we also looked at investigating the potential reuse of the Berkeley Theater, which is something that we heard from a lot of folks, a large majority of people would like to see it have some sort of a theater aspect. And then into implementation, so the, the implementation actions really focus on a few, going a little bit deeper into a few different areas. So the downtown zoning strategy, there's a, based on the land use framework, some recommendations for streamlining the zoning. Identifying stakeholders and partners who will be part of implementing this plan, and making sure that everyone knows their, their role in the process. We looked at the steps of urban design planning process, if you were going to do streetscape improvements, or a public gathering space, what the next steps for that would be, as well as how green infrastructure could be incorporated. We looked at level of service, which is really, if that's an accurate way to measure traffic, and so it goes a little bit deeper into that. We talk more about establishing a parking district, and what the next steps for that would be in terms of getting a group of business owners on board to pay into this district. We looked at calibrated parking maximums based on the parking study results. So that would be a change to the current system of minimums, is to incorporate maximums. And then formula business considerations. So for chain, you know, it's essentially chain businesses is a formula business, how, if, you know, the, in the open houses, open houses that we hosted, people are really in favor of trying to keep small business character, and so if Berkeley was ever going to look at doing any sort of limits on chains, some things that you would want to consider of maybe allowing for regional chains, but not national chains. So a few things that we go a little bit more in depth on. Do you want to advance? We've got just one more. So all those things are summarized into a strategy matrix that takes the strategy, outlines the action items, as well as parties who would be involved in implementing that, potential funding sources and cost range, as well as a timeframe. So the next steps, we met with the DDA Board, and we're working to update the strategic plan for the DDA, based on the master plan document, and then meeting with you all for Planning Commission approval and City Council approval. So open up to questions? Any questions? Mr. Baumgartner, if you could chime in for just a second. It's my understanding that we're going to bring this forward for potential adoption at the August meeting, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
The court requires a public hearing.
The public hearing would be held at that time?
That's correct.
There, there was quite a bit of public input on this, which was great to see. Yeah, we heard from a ton of people at the open houses, and throughout the process have changed the things that we're presenting based on what we've heard. So even things that came up at the last meeting, we've incorporated some changes into the document to address those. So we really feel like the community is behind this. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the shared parking district, how that works? Yeah, so I'm not the expert on it, we have transportation experts, but the idea is that businesses, businesses in the district pay into this shared district that then the DDA manages, and that would cover, like, improvements to the parking areas, so more landscaping, more striping, making sure it's easier to navigate, and then, you know, anyone, there would be, within that district, you wouldn't have any designated spots just for a business, it would be all shared. So the idea, at least in the short term, is maybe focus on the area in your downtown that has the most congestion right now, which is really the traditional core on 12 Mile, where during the parking study, you know, the parking utilization throughout downtown is really low, it's about 30%, but there's a few blocks where it's really high, and that is where I think a lot of the issue, the consternation comes up around parking. So focusing on that area as a test case, and then as it, depending on how it works, with, both for people who are going to the shops using the parking, as well as business owners trying to expand it across 12 Mile and Coolidge. Great. Other comments or questions? It's my understanding that there will, there will not be representatives from Lakota here next time we consider this, so if there's questions specifically for them, we should ask those now. Mr. Muirad?
So the, the low utilization of parking, do you think it's because of people owning lots and not wanting other cars parked there?
I think that has a lot to do with it. I think there's also just what Sam Schwartz, our parking and transportation consultants heard, was that there's just not a lot of clarity of where you can park.
Right.
And so the city lots, where it's really clear that you can park here, those have, you know, 80-plus percent utilization, which is good. You, you want about 85 is the ideal utilization rate. And so that's where the signage comes in, of, you know, either, if it is a parking lot that can be used by anyone, there needs to be signage there that says that.
And when you have a business owner that owns a lot, that's not willing to cooperate, how, how do you convince them that it's in his, in their best interest?
I think there can be, I mean, some discussion of the, like, finances of them maintaining it themselves versus paying into a district, and that just, there is a greater good of your customers are more likely to find parking, are likely to find parking in a shared district, just as much as if you have your own, that, you know, a lot of the overlap is for businesses who don't operate at the same time. So ideally finding, you know, if there's a business owner who is concerned, you know, do the businesses next to them have the same peak hours, and identifying where those pinch points are, and if there are that sort of issue, then maybe there's other solutions that come, can come up in addition to the parking district.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other communities around that have shared parking, as an example?
I don't know of any in Oakland County, but I can follow up with Sam Schwartz. I know that they have worked in other communities to help set them up, so I know that they're, they're common, and it's considered a best practice, but off the top of my head, I don't know ones nearby.
Ms. Chair? Yes, Ms. Schulte.
So the, I know this is a common trend to look, to reduce parking in, you know, communities that want to revitalize their downtown, or otherwise manage. How many are actually acting on that trend, that are actually going forward and changing their ordinance to reduce it, and executing these ideas?
Again, I am personally not the transportation expert, but I know it's common. I know that Sam Schwartz works in a lot of communities to change it from parking minimums to parking maximums, so that it's not so onerous for new businesses to come in and new development to come in, and that they're based on data, they're based on the land uses that are there, they're tied to the land uses, so that it's more targeted for how much parking you need. And, you know, we have this parking study, they did counts at two different times in February and June, so, you know, we have a good idea of what the, the demand is, and making sure that the parking requirements reflect that demand, instead of just what they have been for years.
Commissioner Buckler, the city of Hazel Park actually allows for a reduction based on sort of hardship showing in front of the Planning Commission versus variance. We do some kind of reduction allowance.
Mr. Smith, did you have something?
I do. You talked about the three different gateways, or the three different areas, Gateway West, Gateway South, and Downtown. What was your description for Gateway South?
Of what it is now, or what the future land use should be?
What the future land use was.
I think a mix of commercial and infill retail.
Okay, so I think we might be putting a dent in that.
I'm sorry, um, office, office and commercial.
Yeah, we might be putting a dent in that tonight.
Well, in any district, you want a mix of uses, so I think the residential is, is a good benefit to that as well.
Absolutely. I'm glad you said that, because, yeah, that's, that's coming up later on this evening.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, just, just a second. So if you can get that additional information on...
So if you can get that additional information on, um, the parking follow-up, that would be great.
Yeah, so it's just other communities that have done a parking districts and other communities that are reducing their parking regulations?
Yep, that have maybe put in place parking maximums and, and looked at their parking in, in recent years.
Sure.
That would be great for the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for coming out-
Yeah.
-and all of your efforts on the master plan. Um, and we'll look forward at the next meeting to hopefully adopting.
Sounds good, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the formal public hearing will take place at the next Planning Commission meeting, but if there's anyone here in the audience that wanted to comment on the master plan, we can certainly take your comments down, um, this evening to include in the record. Again, the Planning Commission will not engage you in discussion, but if you'd like to comment, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Wendy Zabramsky, a Berkeley resident. I just wanted to point out that when the Lakota Group presented to, uh, City Council on the thirteenth, um, it was recorded by, um, Berkeley Citizens United. And at minute forty-six, a gentleman, presenter, um, did mention, people did identify, uh, a big, big concern about overflow parking into the, under the street parking. That was not mentioned here tonight. I want you to know that it was mentioned at that and if you want to look at it, it's there. Um, the shared parking idea between Gardner and Tyler is, is a mess because those are all deeded properties. Okay? Now, I'm hearing you say you're gonna ask each of them to donate some money to maintain the parking lot, literally to give Amici's plenty because they only have two deeded parking lots, parking spaces. I've talked to a few of those business owners and they are like, no frigging way are we going to give up our deeded property, you know, to help something that, and Amici's has been the issue. Somehow, it was a pizza place with two parking spots and it's been able to expand and expand. And I live right there where the street parking, you know, I have for six or seven years asked for something to be done about the parking and nothing, nothing has been done. So I'm hearing you talk about maximum parking and lower the, you know, the involvement and good luck with the sharing, but I, I would like to see that, um, the first block of, of Gardner and Tyler and a few others have permit parking only so that we can prevent that from taking up places where we like to have our guests park. And our street is now full of new houses, especially in that first block, and there are a lot of people and, you know, it is, you know, it, it's a daily thing. It's a daily seven, you know, twelve months a year that the parking, you know, is, is got, you know, um, and we know down in front of, um, I'm not sure of the street where, where Alex's is, the boss tells them they have to park on the street. And we just had chemical salon open, chemistry salon open with a parking lot that is so jammed and, you know, things were not done correctly. And to me, it's a fire hazard, you've got those cars parked back, 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 all the way around the building, there's a fire, they're not even gonna be able to get to that building. Something needs to be done with the parking, I agree, but promises of a shared parking agreement isn't helping us at this point. And we really do need to have, um, permit parking on some of those areas to protect the residents and being able to use our own street.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that wants to comment on the master plan, the downtown master plan? No? Okay, then we'll look forward to the public hearing at our next Planning Commission meeting. Moving on then, next we have the Mogo installation. Uh, Mr. Baumgartner, do you want to give us a brief overview of that?
My pleasure, and I believe the applicant's here and has brought a presentation as well, is that correct?
We can defer to that if you'd prefer.
Well, I can just give a, a quick overview on, um, what's being asked of the Planning Commission this evening. Uh, so the Mogo sites, there's two of them included in the packet here. One is on the Robina area, what we call Robina South Plaza there, south of 12 Mile. And the city-owned parcel that exists there, the other proposed area is on the Redway at Earlmont's, just west, or just east of Coolidge. Both of these would be, uh, installed under an operating agreement that the Mogo is entered into with the Downtown Development Authority who accesses the funding mechanism for the installations here. Both of them would provide a bike sharing, uh, access to bike sharing that connects them to a regional network. We're part of an initial suburban, uh, expansion, including several different other suburban communities, including all of our neighbors, including our neighbors, Royal Oak, Hazel Park, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, a little shout to Jeff there. Royal Oak, Oak Park, Huntington Woods and I believe Ferndale as well. And so, uh, excited to be a part of this network, but as you, as I noted in the staff report, city manager does have the oversight for, um, allowing bike installations or bike racks in a public space. This seemed to go beyond that, the ordinance didn't quite seem to fully anticipate this type of use. So, uh, I'm utilizing the or designate portion of the ordinance here and designate the Planning Commission to approve the installation on the, uh, city's own property.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to have a brief presentation?
If I may, is it the MTPA presentation?
No, it says, uh, Berkeley Planning Commission, July twenty nineteen.
There's two of them.
Yeah, PowerPoint or PDF, I just, I save both formats.
Just making sure I'm grabbing the right one.
Just to be on the safe side, you never know. Usually you get one loaded up and then, and then you go to show it and then it's like, oh no, it doesn't look right. Um, so yeah, my name is Lisa Niskowski, I'm the founder and executive director of Mogo. So thank you so much to the commission for having me here tonight. And just a special thank you to Vivian Carmody, who we've been working really closely with at the DDA over, um, probably over a year now, um, in, in making sure that we can expand Mogo to not only other neighborhoods in Detroit, but to other communities in the region as well. So I just wanted to spend a few minutes this evening explaining a little bit about sort of where we have gotten to today and what we have to come next in terms of what to expect about, um, launching an installation and then would be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. Okay, great. So, uh, this is just a, a very brief timeline of where Mogo has been. So we launched in May twenty seventeen with four hundred and thirty bikes at forty-three stations in ten neighborhoods in greater downtown Detroit. But as you can see, the idea for Mogo came much earlier than that, it actually came in two thousand and twelve. Uh, I was working at Wayne State University in the Office of Economic Development at the time and we were approached by a couple of members of the community who had a real interest in seeing Bike Share come to life in, in the city of Detroit. And so we took that interest and brought together stakeholders and said, you know, is there interest in, um, in pursuing this further? And so there was, and we did a feasibility study in twenty thirteen and have really used that as the foundation from which to raise money, build support, launch our first iteration of Bike Share, which we have in Detroit right now. Um, and then that study also had predicted a expansion of our services as well. And so that has still been, been used today. Um, and then just last year, we, um, we launched an adaptive component to our program, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a moment. Um, we're going to be, uh, we added a forty-fourth station, uh, thanks to a partnership with Ford Motor Company, um, late last, uh, last fall. And so that's at their property at Rosa Parks and Michigan Avenue. Um, and then we're looking to expand, um, later this year with an additional thirty-one stations, uh, in the area that was just described. So there'll be ten stations in the Liverneuy-McNichols area of Detroit, uh, as well as Palmer Park. Uh, and then there'll be twenty-one stations in the five suburban communities, so Ferndale, Royal Oak, Oak Park, Huntington Woods and Berkeley. Um, and I will say the city of Ferndale was the one who initially approached us, but have been really pleased with just the, I think the leadership, um, in all of your communities and seeing an opportunity to hopefully reduce some of the issues that we're hearing about tonight in terms of parking. And certainly Bike Share can't, uh, solve every single trip that needs to be taken, but it can be an important component for serving trips like this in, in local communities. And so, I think you have to, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, so this is taken from our annual reports, uh, last year, so these numbers have grown since, since then, but at least wanted to give you some context. That feasibility study that I mentioned that we did in two thousand and thirteen had originally projected a hundred thousand rides in our first full year of operations. We got there in less than five months, uh, when we launched in two thousand and seventeen. So for us, that was a sign that there's a real appetite for other ways to, to move around the city, aside from just the personal vehicle. Um, we've got several pass types here, which you can read a little bit more about. Uh, we're also really proud of, um, some of the offsets we've had in carbon, calories burned, so it's not only healthy for individuals, but healthy for communities as well. And then especially proud of, um, our access pass program, which if you advance to the next slide, um, it's, uh, our, our mission is really focused on serving a wide range of people and a wide range of needs. And so what the access pass is, is it's a five dollar annual pass for anyone who receives state benefits. And so as you're signing up on our website for a membership, uh, you enter in your nine-digit state case ID number, the access pass option will populate and you can get access to our system for an entire year for only five dollars. And so we're proud to now say we've reached the twenty percent mark, so one in five of our members who has a monthly or annual pass has one of these access passes. And so we are serving people with a variety of, of mobility needs, um, through that service. And then we pair that up with a cash payment option as well. So if people don't have access to a checking account or a credit card, you can also say you want to pay with cash as you're signing up, we'll send you a barcode that you can either print out on a sheet of paper or bring your smartphone to any Family Dollar, Seven-Eleven or CVS store, they'll scan that barcode, you'll pay the, the cash, um, your account will be credited and you can ride. And so seventy percent of all of our cash transactions have been for the access pass. So together, we think those two options are really, um, opening up additional accessibility to, to transportation for people who otherwise might not be able to afford a car. Um, we also have programs like our Neighborhood Ambassador Program, which this year we had twelve of them, seven of which are in our expansion area. And so they're really our boots on the ground that are attending community meetings, sharing information about Mogo, getting community feedback on where people would like to see stations, as well as bringing that feedback, uh, back to us so that we can hear, what are people's questions, how should we be messaging, where is there more outreach that we need to be doing? And so we're really happy to be working with those twelve individuals. Um, and then we offer programs like our free street skills classes. So we offer a couple of different courses like Biking One-O-One, um, which will teach people how to ride a bike if you've never ridden a bike or haven't ridden a bike in a really long time. Uh, and we also offer a confident city cycling class, so for people who already know how to bike but are unsure with a lot of changes on the roads, uh, in recent years with bike lanes, now protected bike lanes, people aren't quite sure, where should I be on the road? Should I be riding with traffic, against traffic, in the street, on the sidewalk? And so we really teach people all of the rules of the road so that they can bike safely and confidently. And all those classes are free, you'll receive a free helmet for participating and we're happy to say we're going to be offering some of those courses, uh, in our expansion area this fall. So look for August, September and even into early October if the weather cooperates, uh, for us to have, uh, some of those classes, um, in your area as well. Um, and then, as I mentioned earlier, in, uh, twenty eighteen, we launched Adaptive Mogo, which is we added thirteen adaptive cycles, so think hand cycles, tandem bikes, trikes, recumbent bikes to our fleet. Um, they run a little bit differently than our traditional Bike Share programs. You can imagine those kinds of cycles are quite large and so they're not parked at our stations. Instead, we currently have a partnership with Wheelhouse Detroit, which is located on the Riverwalk, um, in Detroit. And, uh, they check those bikes out for people who reserve them for two hours at a time. And so as we expand to the suburbs, we'll also be expanding, uh, access to those bikes as well. And so we'll be looking for partners with, with which we can, uh, check those bikes out and make them available for people. And, uh, as you can see here, we were featured in the New York Times, uh, late last fall, is only one of two major cities in the United States that offer a program like this. So we're really proud to not only be providing the kind of leadership around accessibility for people, um, here in the region, but hoping to be, um, a leader in, uh, other communities and a model for other communities as well. Um, so what we've accomplished in terms of making this all happen here in Berkeley and, and the expansion communities, um, as you've probably heard, we've secured an almost five-hundred-thousand-dollar federal grant, it's called the Transportation Alternatives Program or TAP Grant. Uh, we used a similar, uh, funding source for our first, uh, our first round of, of Mogo in Detroit. And so, um, we secured this, the second round here, um, and that's, uh, being done in partnership with the city of Ferndale and the city of Detroit, who will be administering that grant. Because we wanted to be able to administer the grant locally versus having a statewide project manager, uh, we flexed that funding from the Federal Highway Administration who issues the grant to the Federal Transit Administration. And so that's kind of a bureaucratic, you know, paper pushing kind of thing, but important for us because that means we can work through the city of Detroit, um, to go through our current purchase order so that we're using the same technology so that it's all compatible and not have to go through that process all over again because it, you know, I think we could all agree that our transportation system here in the region is, is fragmented at best and so we didn't want to add another layer of fragmentation to that. So we've completed that process. Um, we've also secured additional grant and sponsorship funding that's helping to significantly defray the cost of this to local communities, um, thanks to some foundation support, um, as well as our, our title sponsors, Henry Ford Health System and Health Alliance Plan. Um, and so they have, uh, helped defray those costs pretty considerably. And then we've had to submit documents for a section one-oh-six review, which I'm speaking in front of a body who's probably somewhat familiar with that. So we have to demonstrate that the locations that we're asking to place our stations aren't having an adverse impact on historic properties or districts. And so, um, those papers have been submitted to the FTA for their review. And then what is next, um, is, uh, we are going through that review process right now, so skip to the third bullet.
Nope, sorry.
Yep, you're right. Back, back, perfect, thank you. Uh, and that, that gets then sent to the State Historic Preservation Office for their review. They're gonna sense a theme of a lot of reviews taking place here. Um, once, they'll send it back to the FTA, who will then send it over to Department of Labor, uh, who has their own review process. And then it comes down to the local labor union so that they can weigh in and make sure that this isn't having, um, a negative impact on them. It hasn't in our first round, so these are just steps in the process that we have to go through, but nonetheless, we have to do them. Um, and so once that, that piece is complete, then the FTA can actually issue the, the grant award, um, to the city of Detroit, who again is administering that on behalf of all the communities. Um, while that's happening, we are not standing still, so we are securing approvals on the thirty-one station locations and the two that are here in Berkeley are up for your consideration tonight. And then securing approvals on a memorandum of understanding with the city of Detroit and the expansion communities and the operations contract with, which is with Mogo, which, if I haven't said it before, we're a five-oh-one-C-three, uh, we were created at the end of two thousand and fifteen solely for the purpose of, um, running a Bike Share program in the city of Detroit and now as we're expanding to other communities as well. And so, um, Berkeley, uh, the Berkeley DDA is who that, um, uh, those contracts are, um, are executed with. And so, um, fortunately Vivian gave me copies of those tonight, so we're, we're all set there. So we're trying to do as much of the local stuff that we can do now so that once we get the federal approvals, we're able to move forward. And then my next last slide here. Um, so what's next is the FTA will issue that award to the city of Detroit and then city council will have to approve that. Uh, we've teed up all of the procurement, uh, paperwork at the city, so once we, we get the go-ahead, we're able to move there. And then, uh, installing the stations, testing them, that will take about a couple of weeks, um, just to make sure everything is, is operational. Um, and something you may be interested in is that the station technology that we use, um, it's all solar and battery powered, so we're not connecting to any source of electricity. So the great news is, is that while we've spent a lot of time really trying to think through, uh, the best locations for the stations, uh, we'll know after six months of use, a year's worth of use, whether they're in the right spot. And so we can always relocate them, um, if we decide that it's going to be more successful at a different point, uh, on an intersection, further down the road, move it over a couple of blocks. Um, if there's gonna be any sort of, you know, development or construction projects taking place, we can relocate those stations temporarily or permanently as well. And so, um, we really like the equipment because there is that degree of flexibility that's, that's offered with that. And then finally, once all that's completed, we'll be able to launch the system and, uh, and have everyone on, on bikes. And so, um, we hope to make, uh, announcements on station locations, um, sometime in the next, uh, month or so here, once all the communities have approved them and we can show them, you know, all thirty-one of them together, because we really want to emphasize that this is a network. And so while Berkeley has two stations, they're part of that thirty-one station network and then what will be part of our, uh, seventy-five station network overall, um, between here in the city of Detroit. And so with that, uh, the last slide with contact info about how to stay in touch, uh, with updates from, from our organization, um, but be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to start discussion on this item?
Um, yes, so you mentioned, um, Ferndale, Huntington Woods, Pleasant Ridge and Royal Oak, how many, are thirty-one stations between the five communities or are those, including some in the city as well, including the ones in Palmer Park or Palmer Woods and the Liverneuy, this, whatever they call it, the Fashion District?
Yeah, the Avenue of Fashion. Yeah, so the thirty-one stations are the ten that are in Detroit, which is that Liverneuy-McNichols area, as well as Palmer Park. And then the five expansion communities are Ferndale, Royal Oak, Oak Park, Berkeley and Huntington Woods.
And how many in each of those communities, off the top of your head?
Uh, so Ferndale is seven, Royal Oak is six, Oak Park is five, Berkeley two, Huntington Woods one.
Okay, thank you.
I've done this a few times. Literally, we've been working on this over the last year with all the communities, so yeah.
So can I ask another question?
Of course.
So like, what is the typical rental rate? Like, is, there's a deposit, there's a per hour use or a minimum use? Can you just give me an idea of what those rates look like?
Yeah, so we offer, uh, a few different pass types. So if you are a casual rider, just in town, want to try it out once, don't want to make any sort of long-term commitment, we have an eight-dollar daily pass. Um, we also offer for longer-term use, an eighteen-dollar monthly pass, an eighty-dollar annual pass, and then the five-dollar annual access pass that I talked about earlier. And so with any of those pass types, you get an unlimited number of thirty-minute trips. And so Bike Share is different than bike rental in that it's about going from point A to point B versus a more sort of leisurely recreational ride. And so while you can certainly keep the bike out a little bit longer, um, than, you know, a thirty-minute time period, if you do, you may be paying a few dollars in overages, uh, if you decide to keep that out. But we really want to see people to check a bike out, go where you need to go, check it into a station, go grab a bite to eat, run your errand, et cetera. it into a station, go grab a bite to eat, run your errand, et cetera. And then, when you're done, check another bike out so that those bikes are available for other people to use while you're not using them. And so, that's how the model works. It's worked like that in many other cities that we studied as we were doing that feasibility study. And I've just actually competed, completed a member survey, getting feedback on those options. So, we may tweak those in the future, but for right now, that's what it looks like.
So, one last question. Are you considering 13 in Woodward with the new development up there, or Beaumont, as one of the stations?
Yeah, so that's technically Royal Oak, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, yes, that's definitely come up. We wanted to place stations in areas that were ready to have stations currently, and while we were going through the siting process, it was in the heart of a very active construction zone. And so, for example, in Detroit, the stations we're going to be placing along Livernoy, we won't be putting those down until the streetscape project there is done. And so, but yeah, we're certainly, we feel like this is a good start. We wanted to create enough density between these 31 stations that it's useful enough for people to use so that you're not having to bike, you know, an extra mile or two to find a station, because then why are you going to use it? But we're definitely open for opportunities to expand the system. And I think we're really excited to learn a lot about how bike share works in communities that aren't a core business district, like in the City of Detroit, but, you know, in smaller, inner-ring suburban communities, and to see what the use cases for that look like. So, we're excited to be expanding up in this area.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Patterson?
So, I could rent a bike in Berkeley and return it to Ferndale? Like, I wouldn't have to return to the two stations here.
You can check any bike out from any station and return it to any station, anywhere through the network. And that is not even necessarily in the expansion area, but your pass up here would be good in Detroit and vice versa, so it's all interchangeable, yeah.
Oh, parlor bank. Yes, Mr. Smith?
I like the two locations you chose here in Berkeley. I have a question. The one on Earlmont is right at the curb. Are these, do these operate in the winter?
Yes, good question. We are a 365 service.
Okay, so, our snow, our public, our Department of Public Works is going to plow you folks in, so, like they do the rest of us. But that's what they do, that's fine. So, how do you deal, or how do you plan on dealing with the snow and ice? Because you're right at the curb line.
Yeah, so I'm, Vivian might actually be helpful to answer the specifics related to DPW, because she's been our liaison, working directly with the city. But I will say, for where we've been in Detroit, for our 44 stations, so we have a contract with an organization called Shift Transit. They're our operator. And so, they're the ones who do all the maintenance on the bikes, the rebalancing of the system. So, when stations get full or empty, they're adding or subtracting bikes. And then, in the wintertime, they are making sure that bikes are accessible. And so, they are responsible for shoveling snow around the stations, a four-foot perimeter, and making sure that the bikes are able to get in and out of the docking points, making sure there's no snow on the solar panels so that the station can remain charged. So, they'll be doing that. Obviously, it would be helpful if we didn't have, if our partners weren't working against us and creating more work for that team. And so, hopefully, we can, you know, again, it will be a learning process. It will be a new piece of street furniture that we'll all have to get used to, but it's something that we've dealt with in Detroit with some of the big plows. I mean, we have stations that are on Woodward, Cass Avenue, et cetera.
So, that's a typical, or a normal location, right at the curb line?
Yeah, we like to...
Can be.
Yep. Yeah, because we other, our preference is to put them on sidewalks where, so you're not necessarily, you know, farther away from traffic. We also do have them on street where we'll take up a couple of parking spaces. We know that's obviously not popular for many of the reasons, you know, we're hearing about from residents in various communities. And so, but we can be, have them in-street. We actually have a couple of in-street where it's the curb, then a bike lane, and then the parking lane, and then the bike station is right at the end of the parking lane. So, it's actually in the street as opposed to up against the curb. And then, we do have about five stations in our current area that are on private property. But yeah, the sidewalk is typically our top preference for location.
I have one other question. Now, these are, it's solar-driven. Both of these photographs, I don't know if anybody noticed, are in 100% shade, by the way. Your solar panels are only 10 foot eight high. Now, you know, they were taken at a certain time of day, then maybe it was shade, but solar panels can't absorb some sun in shade. But I hope we're not cutting down any trees to get light. I'm just, I'm just making a practical point here that 10 foot eight isn't that tall of a solar panel. I don't want them 15 feet high, I don't think anybody here does. But looking at these two photographs, they are 100% shaded, your locations. So, may want to take that into consideration with the future.
Yeah, so our operations team, they came out and actually did the photographs for the site planning work there. And so, I mean, they're definitely looking for things like access to solar. We use the same technology that the City of Chicago used for the first few iterations of its bike share, and with the exception of one that was underneath a bridge, and, you know, many tall skyscrapers around there where they get a limited amount of sun, have not had an issue there. That being said, the operations team that we work with, they're monitoring throughout the day the battery life on all the stations. And so, in the winter, when it's, there's far less sun for any of us to go around, you know, they're monitoring the battery life, and then they're actually swapping out batteries throughout the day to make sure that the stations have the charge when we don't have enough solar. So, it's something that we'll monitor, and if it becomes a longer-term issue, we may have to do something with it. But we absolutely do not plan on cutting down any trees, or, you know, providing anything other than the specs than what we provide.
Well, yeah, I don't expect that your facility here draws a lot of current off of a solar panel or anything, so you're not charging cars here or anything.
Yeah.
How are these attached to the pavement?
They're not. So, they're incredibly heavy steel plates. We have to rent a crane truck to install them. So, that process usually takes, depending on the size of the station, can take an hour to two hours to get all the pieces down. But once they're down, they're virtually impossible to be moved. We've had one car hit a plate near our second, at our second and Selden station. It damaged the docking point on the end, but the plate itself did not move, nothing on the station moved, so they're very sturdy.
Those are my questions.
Any other questions, Ms. Kemp?
Do these generally have ads on them?
Yeah, so, good question. So, the two stations that Berkeley is getting, what we call our satellite stations, or light stations. So, they are, just what they sound like, a lighter version of our stations, so they're a little bit less expensive. So, they will not be coming with the display panels on the end that our standards kiosk stations have. We use those stations in Detroit, we do sell advertising on them. The two in Berkeley will not have display panels as currently proposed. Again, this is a modular system, so we can add and subtract components as we would like. And so, if at some point that we would decide we want to have a map showing where the two stations and maybe future stations would be, we could always purchase that and add that on. But for right now, there won't be any advertising or a map panel at the end. There'll just be stickers, instructional information on the kiosk, you know, telling people how to use the system. And then, there will be, if we ever get, you know, a station sponsor, so that's something that we always can work with the local community on identifying companies that may want to sponsor a station, in which case, we do put some, you know, relatively small, discreet sponsorship logos on our stations. But again, it's just on the existing equipment, it's not adding on anything extra than what you're seeing in the photos there.
Okay. Any other questions? Or motions to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Baumgartner?
I was reluctant to note, and I apologize, both our Department of Public Works and our Department of Public Safety have reviewed the sites. Public Works provided a letter here and has kept an ongoing dialogue with Mogo. Public Safety has reviewed these, and they have no issues with them. So, I apologize for not mentioning that at the onset.
That's okay, thank you for including it in the packet as well.
I have a question. You have a question? I was just saying, is there any update that needs to be done during current ordinances with the system in here, like a special use item, or?
At this point, I think we're looking at it as a bike rack, maybe something a little bit more than that, hence our opportunity to weigh in on things. But I don't think, unless Mr. Staren has something he wants to add on that.
Well, there's, I'm sorry. There's no ordinance in the work, but one thing that we're considering, and I know the City of Ferndale is considering too, and I'm not quite sure how it's handled in Detroit, but there would be some type of permit or license agreement, which, you know, would be fairly commonplace for any type of sidewalk occupancy. And there could be some, just some protections and restrictions in there, hold harmless language, the kind of stuff lawyers like to put into those things, just to protect the city from any liabilities or problems that may arise. So, that's something we're looking into. It may be, is we go on with this type of bike sharing, and then if the next wave brings us the Bird scooters or other things, we may have to take a deeper dive into our ordinance and see if we need to specifically address by ordinances types of things. But at this point, we're taking this as presented to you tonight, and I said we're giving consideration whether there should be a permit or a license to go along with it, that would just be an administrative matter, not something that would have to come back to you.
Ms. Buckler?
I have a question. So, I want to make a, I want, if you can answer the question. I assume that these bikes must be returned to the rack to stop the time limit in the purchasing and/or it would create an access charge for the user, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, that differentiates from Bird or Lime scooters, where they just get left on the side of the road?
Well, I understand they're different, but I'm just saying, they all have their unique features, and they, and at some point, you do have these things, they can, in different towns, they're all over the place, and they do create regulatory issues. But I don't think we're there yet with this.
And there is some kind of agreement that provides some protections for the City of Berkeley, that we're with the DDA who's sponsoring this?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so there's some legal protection? Yeah, that's in our operations agreement with the City of Berkeley. And I will say that each community we found has done it a little bit differently. So, the City of Detroit issues us right-of-way permits. Royal Oak has sent us license agreements. We've just gotten, you know, an okay over email on some others, so each community has handled it a little bit differently. And so, we're certainly flexible as, you know, circumstances change, and if that, the nature of the agreement with us needs to change, we understand that and are happy to work with you guys to find what works best for you.
Okay. And I just have one more thing for Mr. Baumgartner. Can you please have the air conditioner turned on right now? It is so cold in here and so loud, and I'm freezing today.
Mr. Trado's on it.
Thank you, I'm sorry. And it's like 65 or 70 degrees outside, so it's probably necessary.
I have a couple of questions. What happens if you get to your destination and the rack is full?
Well, I'm proud to report that our operations team does such a great job of rebalancing the system. You currently have a greater than 99% chance of there being an available bike or dock available to you. If for some reason you happen around that 1% of the time when that's not the case, when you walk up to our, the station, you're able to touch the screen and say, "I need an additional 15 minutes," because the station is full, and they'll be able to, you know, the station's obviously registered as full, and so, the network will provide that option for you, and then you can request an additional 15 minutes.
Okay. My next question is, how are we treating this? Is this, are we voting as a site plan approval?
So, I think we're voting, not necessarily as approval of the site plan for the Mogo stations, but as approval of the Mogo stations. It's a little bit of a unique situation.
The city council, are we recommending to city council, or are we doing this?
I think unless I'm incorrect, that Mr. Baumgartner has decided that we are the designee approving this.
That is correct, so it's approving the location.
Okay, then I, oh, there's more questions.
I was just, if somebody gets injured on one of these cycles, who then is responsible? Is it the city, or the rider, or?
Yeah, so each person who rides when you purchase any one of those passes I described earlier, you are accepting responsibility for your behavior when you're riding, so it's a waiver of liability that they sign. We also are required to carry a pretty significant insurance policy through the City of Detroit, and imagine that your communities as well are, will be covered under that. To be honest, we haven't had any issues, I don't want to jinx myself, have not had any issues with that, and really haven't heard about any serious injuries. So, I mean, usually that word gets back to us, or we'll see something that was filed in a report. So, so far, so good in terms of that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to comment on this item?
Of course.
Charles Trel from Berkeley. Thank you for getting started on talking about who Shift Transit is. My question along those lines, do we have an agreement with Shift Transit for the city to cover things like workman's comp liability, being that they're going to be on city property doing work? So, my thought is that basically, they're going to be a service provider to the city, so they're going to need coverage for things like workers' comp, liability, et cetera, et cetera, for doing work on city property. Is that in place? Is that in place?
We'll collect all your comments, Mr. Trel, and then we'll kind of address them after that.
Okay. I was glad to see it actually included in this package of paperwork. When bike racks are installed on city property, per Berkeley code, they become the property of the city. So, in this case, that's going to be the case, that these racks then, these stations then are going to become city property? If not, I don't think that this body is where approval for such a thing belongs. I think that properly belongs with city council to make that change in code, or to make that variance from code. It doesn't really belong here, I think that really belongs in council. You talked a little bit about sponsorship funding. I know at least you asked the question about the signage. There's no signage for sponsors? That's inconceivable to me, because Berkeley code for signage is off-prem advertising is one of the specific prohibited signs. 94-6-sub-1, if anybody wants to look that one up, but off-prem advertising is prohibited. I thought I saw some logos for HAP and DMC on the presentation. From my angle, I couldn't really tell if that was on the station, on bikes, or what that, where that was contained. But if there's that type of advertising, our code specifically prohibits that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Baumgartner or Mr. Staren, do you want to address the signage and the bike racks being the property of the city, those two items?
True. Reverse order, I guess. The applicants already indicated and answered the question that there won't be signage on the stations. The ownership of the bike rack, the ownership of this, the installations here are covered under the use agreement with the vendor. The city does not intend to own those bike racks at any point. I noted at the top of the presentation here, the uniqueness of this particular installation, and how this does not conform to the typical, to likely what this ordinance envisioned. And so, having a vendor relationship with Mogo, the city does not intend to, and does not have any plans to take ownership of these stations at all. As I said, though, it's not a typical bike rack. And then, the Shift, was it Shift, well, actually, is a third-party serving at the behest of Mogo, so they would have the relationship of covering insurances and things like that. I'm sure Mr. Staren can weigh in on that as well.
I think you covered it well.
Anything to add on that item?
Yeah, just to clarify on the sponsorship and advertising piece, so we have two existing title sponsors right now, and that's Henry Ford and Health Alliance Plan. You'll see their logos on our bikes in downtown Detroit. They will also be logos on the rear fender of the bikes in our expansion area as well. So, I want to make sure that there aren't any surprises as it relates to that. We classify sponsorship and advertising a little bit differently. So, as I mentioned, there will be no advertising, because we won't have the display panel at the end of the station, which is where we currently offer advertising on our Detroit stations. Those will not be in Berkeley, so the advertising won't be an issue. But if we were to find a partnership with a local business who says we want to pay some money to help support Mogo because we find this springs value to our community, then we would find the appropriate way to recognize that sponsorship on the stations. But that would be something that is to come, not something that is planned yet. But I did want to clarify that the bikes themselves will have the logos of our sponsors, sponsors, Henry Ford and HAP, because they have paid a significant amount of money to have their, their logo there. And they also help make this as affordable as I described through the pass option. So just wanted to make sure that that's, that that's clear. Thank you.
And I assume that, Mr. Sterren, we wouldn't have any concerns about conflicts with the sign ordinance?
Well, it's something we'll have to look at. I mean, I'm, I'm hearing this for the first time tonight, but certainly if our, if our sign ordinance is invoked, it would apply and need to be conformed with. But I'm, I'm not reaching a conclusion tonight that the sign ordinance would apply.
Okay, so we'll look into that then.
Right. And, you know, and it's, it's not unusual, particularly on bicycles or on automobiles or other things, to have sponsors or advertisements. And those typically would not be covered by the sign ordinance.
So if there was a delivery business or a pest control business or something that had their vehicle parked and had their signage on their vehicle, kind of a similar situation?
Correct.
Well, I would imagine that you couldn't have the brand of the bicycle on if you take it to that level. You couldn't be a Schwinn bicycle because it would be advertising Schwinn on the side of the bike. So I, I would not want to see signs at this point without revisiting the ordinance. But I certainly think a fender sticker is fine. The logo of the company, Mogo.
Okay.
I will ask my question again, if I may. What are we going to make a motion on?
We are asked to make a motion to approve the Mogo locations.
The locations?
Yes.
Okay. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the two locations that were presented to us. Obviously, there's some things that have to be worked out legally, the agreement and all that, so. But as far as locations, I make a motion.
A second.
If I may?
Yes.
I don't want to interrupt too much, but I just want to draw your attention to bicycle racks, bicycle parking are sometimes used in lieu of the parking requirement per our zoning ordinance. So I want that to be kind of brought up front, that some of the businesses that would be surrounded by these Mogo stations would then be able to, would they be able to exercise that right of that bicycle share without installing additional park bicycle racks?
I don't think so.
I would say no.
Yeah, I would say no. It's my understanding these would be in addition to any sort of bicycle racks.
They're not pucks, they're not to go like chain my bike to. The idea of a bike rack for, you know, an open bike rack or that is so I can ride my bike from that business and ride my bike home, just like I drive my car to that business and drive it home. I can't go chain my Schwinn to the Mogo station.
A sticker on it.
Well, I could, but it'll probably be like, what's it called, the group? The, the third party? Shift, yeah, shift gear is going to probably snap my chain and ho it off.
Thank you. I just wanted some clarification on that for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have an approval and a second. Any other comments on the motion, questions? Could you call the roll, Ms. Schlutau?
Buckler?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapelansky?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Welcome to the committee. Okay, we'll move on then to St. Mary's Orthodox Church. This is site plan review 0419. Is the applicant here this evening? You want to approach the podium and give a brief overview of what you're proposing for the church?
My name is Edward Ashaev. I'm a member of the church and I'm the architect of the dome. The dome has been always a main core of the Orthodox faith. It's like a gate to heaven. However, the church was built and what they're trying to make here is a symbolic statement about the dome. It's more like a decorative dome to represent the church. And that's the main idea of it. We looked at the code like for rehab and we, we think it will go through.
Okay. Mr. Baumgarten, anything to add to that?
Yes, ma'am. I include your packet, I do a quick overview. The, the property in question is situated in the downtown district. The downtown district does not have a maximum height requirement, even though it's on 12 Mile. There's a 12 Mile district as indicated on the site plan enclosed. This is actually, it's on 12 Mile but outside the 12 Mile district. Therefore, the 40-foot height maximum indicated on the site plan does not apply. There is not currently a maximum heights requirement in the downtown district. So other than that, it has no effect on the other elevations and the other visible areas. I will note, as Commissioner Kepner had pointed out to me earlier in the week, the, the church isn't actually in, in approved use within the district, but it actually existed prior to the establishment of that district. So it is existing non-conforming or grandfathered property there.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the commission?
I have one.
Yes, Ms. Kepner?
So I guess I'm wondering with our, with our code, since it's a non-conforming use, can, our, our code says we can't, it can't enlarge or be added in size. So by making it taller, are we running into that issue of enlarging a non-conforming building?
So perhaps, Mr. Sterren, could weigh in on that? I do believe the code talks about not expanding a non-conforming use. It's a little bit of a different situation in the sense that they're not expanding the footprint or the floor area of the non-conforming use. It's more that they're adding a decorative feature, unless there's something else you wanted to add on that?
The use itself isn't changing, so there's really no impact on the non-conforming use. It's the building. And unless the planning commission feels that adding this dome and the increased height bulk or whatever somehow expands the use itself, then that would be problematic and that would invoke the ordinance. But otherwise, I wouldn't think that this type of request would be something that would require any type of variance or that would be prohibited by the ordinance.
Any other questions or comments on this? Mr. Murad?
What's the color of the, the brick structure? Is it going to match the existing church?
There'll be no, oh, you're talking about that supporting? Yeah, it should match the existing.
Anyone else? Or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve site plan review, SP-0419.
A second. Okay. Is there anyone from the audience that wanted to comment on this item? Sorry, I skipped over that there. No? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any changes to the motion? No? Ms. Schlutau, could you call the roll, please?
Buckler?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapelansky?
Yes. Okay, you're all set. Okay, next up we have another site plan review, site plan 0519. Approval for facade at 3818 12 Mile Road. Is the applicant here this evening?
Joe Nowitzki, 3856 12 Mile, Berkeley. Are we doing a slide? Did we, are we going to do anything electronic?
If you have something we can pull up?
Oh, no, okay. I'm Joe, this is Tim.
Tim Yankee.
Tim, Tim wants to inhabit the building on 12 Mile. He's an artist. He's got a corporate image that's prevalent up in Traverse City. He's a fairly renowned artist. He'll bring life to our two art fairs. And he will bring the world of art to Berkeley. It should be an incredibly exciting opportunity to see life on this corner here. He's got a, he's got a lot of support behind him. And I'll let Tim speak for his own use here. But the intent is to literally take the existing footprint and do a new facade on it. If you look at the existing building, it's in pretty poor shape. The, the brick on the outside is, is, is quite poor shape. It would have to come off anyway. So we're back down to a block building and a marginal frame. And we're leaving the exterior walls and, and putting a new cap on it, pretty much, and putting a new image on it. And I want to welcome the new folks and faces I see around the room. I hope to see you a lot more often. Tim, why don't you talk about your building?
Good evening. My name is Tim Yankee. I live in Huntington Woods. I currently have a studio in Birmingham in the rail district, Cole Street and over there by the Whistlestop Cafe. And that is, that place is just exploding. So my wife and I, we are in the process of building a second studio up in Torch Lake. We, we can have a studio anywhere in the world. We're a global company and global artist. We're on over 104 cruise ships. So I'm very busy. And we're also looking out west for additional studios. Santa Fe is one and, and possibly Lake Tahoe. But in the meantime, we want to build in Berkeley. Huntington Woods doesn't really offer that much in a commercial viability, kind of, maybe doesn't have the charm. But 12 Mile, the, the idea of being an arts district and art, is it Art West or the West District or whatever it is? I mean, I'm thinking it's perfect, the West Gateway. I'm thinking, how perfect is that? So to establish some square footage there and bring some presence and bringing, you know, I'm a contracted artist with the world's largest art gallery. So we've, we've got a backbone. We're, we're celebrating our 50th anniversary, the gallery is. And they sponsor me and they're, they're 110% behind me to go ahead and establish a pretty, you know, substantial studio. And we'll, we'll bring in clients, we'll bring in people, other renowned artists from around the world, Paris, Tel Aviv. I mean, we've, we've got contacts with connections and contracts with a lot of, a lot of great artists and a lot of friends of mine are from all over the world. And so we'll, we'll come in there, we'll have collaborations, we'll invite the, the community in. It's, we hope to create maybe a destination place right there at that, that west end when people are coming in from the west and into the east and they see Berkeley for the first time. We want to make some presence. And being right on the corner of Prairie and 12 Mile, we have a lot of visibility. So a lot of, a lot of impact could be made from visitors coming from different, a variety of different directions.
Okay.
We're looking forward to it too, by the way.
Great.
Yeah.
Mr. Baumgarten, anything to add on this?
I did move through, go through an evaluation of the, the district regulations. They're indicated in the memo included in your packet there. It does appear to meet all the, all four of the district regulations. The window coverage seems appropriate for the 12 Mile frontage. The building elevation is going to contain the front entrance. The siding is not a residential nature. It's a, it appears to be like a wooden log kind of thing. And then again, the fourth component is that the, if we do indicate that some of these are, the project doesn't meet those. Item D does allow the planning commission to revise some of these requirements if they so choose. So other than that, they just went through and looked at some of the renderings and the elevations. We did get a review letter from Department of Public Works, mostly centered around stormwater issues that will be sent over to the applicant, but it was not received in time to provide in the packet.
I assume this meets the parking requirements?
Yes. Yep, it appears to do so. They, they supply, requirement would be about eight with the, with the provided spaces on site plus the bike rack. They do meet that standard.
Okay, and then a couple of questions on the studio space. Forgive my ignorance, but I'm not really an artist. So I'm not really sure how that works. So is the studio open to the public or it'll just be a space for artists to come and then you'll have a separate gallery area? How would that work?
It would be, I need space. And the idea is, I don't need a whole lot of parking. It's just me, maybe an employee or two. But no, I need, I need a place to create and, you know, with ample sunlight and a corner being there and having access, you know, to bringing in supplies and materials, Blick being right over here, it's, it's ideal. So, yeah, it would be primarily an art studio. And I would invite other artists to come in and maybe do some collaborations. We, my wife and I, Nikki, even thought about holding some classes or some open houses, maybe inviting, you know, different schools. I've done a lot for the Pontiac School System. I'm highly involved with Habitat for Humanity and the Garry Sinis Foundations. So possibly having some events there. But, yeah, having maybe a little retail area, you know, by appointment, you know, selling some products. We're working with merchandise, licensing apparel and so on. So it could be, it could be really exciting, yeah, so.
So what I'm hearing is primarily a private space? But sometimes you might have public events or those sorts of things?
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah, we're open to that. If anybody has suggestions too, like, hey, you know, we got an idea, could we utilize this for that or we're open for it? Sure.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wanted to comment on this item? No? Okay, I'll turn it over to the planning commission for discussion then. Who would like to start?
I don't see any photo metrics for the back parking lot area. Has anybody taken back parking lot as a consideration?
There's one lamp there now. We're planning on taking it down and putting on two 60-watt lamps on the back of the building and that's it. No, no parking lot standards, no lights.
No lights.
So I want to talk for a minute about the, the elevations. So this is a very interesting aesthetic.
Sure.
So I, I know Mr. Nowitzki's aware, but I'm not sure you're aware, that we have these design guidelines we've been working on for quite some time. They're still in draft form, so they haven't been adopted yet.
Right.
And while this is a very attractive building, they, they don't really mesh with what we envisioned for the community in terms of talking about, particularly with the downtown master plan, the mid-century retro kind of look. What do, what do some of your other buildings look like? You mentioned you had a facility in Birmingham. Do they all have this aesthetic or is, are they?
No, I didn't have the luxury. 10, 12 years ago, when I went in there, they were just refurbishing the, the rail district. So it was pretty much mechanics garages that they pretty much put windows in and some sliding doors. So it's, it's, you know, they put a big facelift on it with some, you know, nice windows and some paint. But now it's the booming place to be. You know, as soon as you give it a nail, name like the rail district, everything's going to go up. I've just grown out of it. I'm an ideal candidate though, because I have two units now over there, two 2,400-square-foot units. And I don't require any parking spot, but I need more room and I need to expand. And I want to incorporate my designs. The place we're building up at Torch Lake is a beautiful log cabin. And we, and I'm a, I'm a North, North American wildlife painter and abstract painter, a lot of South American or South Western art, Native American, First Nation. So it's, it's, it's a theme that I paint often that's, that's brought me to where I am in my career, you know, globally. So I want to incorporate that kind of feel, that studio feel into my, my work environment. So when you walk on the inside, you're going to totally feel like, you know, wow, this really, really matches the guy's paintings. Yeah, I mean, he's painting the Southwest, he's painting North American wildlife. It really feels, you know, part of it. So, but, yeah, we'll totally take in consideration the DDA guidelines.
Yeah, there may be a way to incorporate, because I can appreciate what you're saying about wanting to capture your, your type of painting along with the facade of the building.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe Mr. Nowitzki has some ideas of how to incorporate some elements of what our design guidelines have with some of those natural-looking type aesthetics that you're, that you're going for.
Totally take that into consideration, yeah, sure.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Oh, I had one other thing. There's a fence along the rear property line there that currently extends, it looks like not quite the length of what will be the parking area.
Right.
I don't know if there's any consideration that you'd give to extending that fence to provide screening for that homeowner?
I know what fence you're talking about. I don't even know if that's ours or the resident's fence.
The resident's fence?
It could be. Yeah.
Okay. Have you talked to that adjacent homeowner at all?
I have not, no.
Okay. We haven't heard from them. I just noticed that there was a gap there and maybe an opportunity to provide some screening. But I, if that's the resident's fence and he has no issues, then it's a suggestion.
We'll build a really nice fence, you know, something that matches, you know, and we'll collaborate with him and say, hey, let's do it.
That would be great, if you could provide him that screening.
Yeah.
It was just something I noticed. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
Well, yeah. So I, well, well, I'm from Torch Lake and I appreciate the log cabin aesthetic, having grown up there. I, I do share Ms. Kapelansky's concerns that it, does it really fit in our kind of design aesthetic for the city? Or will it really kind of stand out? And I know we, you want it to stand out to some extent, but I'm wondering if we can somehow, I mean, I like the shape of the building, but the log cabin feature, I think, gives me a little bit of pause, kind of plop right there.
More of an accent material.
Yeah. I mean, I.
If I may?
Yes.
We have an incredible collection of images in Berkeley. Let's start at the tasty phrase with the little pink and blue 50s. Let's go to the, let's go to our Berkeley logo. Let's go to our cobblestone building. Let's go to our castle that we're putting a dome on. We can go around the city and find a unique collection here that is undeniable. It's charming. It's wonderful.[1740.03] We want to be one of those pieces in the collective. There's no sense in simply just replicating history here. He's got an idea here. He came in and said, hey, can we? And I said, let's go talk and ask.
All right.
We put the two dormers on the front. You'll see even, we said it's optional because it's starting to stretch into a residential area there. So let's knock off the two dormers on the front. Let's, you know, let's take it down just a notch, but don't destroy his venue here. Thank you.
I understand. And I don't think we're trying to destroy the venue. We're just looking to try to incorporate maybe both aesthetics.
Well, sure. Well, take a look. How many buildings do we have with slope roofs on them in this town today? I've got a collection of them. I've got photographs of all of them. There's upwards of 40 on this two miles. This is not out of character with Berkeley. It's not out of character with the north. This is a northern community. This is, Michigan has more timber stands than any place in the nation. This is a simulated river rock. We're celebrating the glacial till and the essence of Michigan right here. We're not doing something that shouldn't be. We're not building a taco stand in New York. We're doing something that is typologically absolutely perfectly embodied here in Berkeley with this collection of other images.
And I can certainly appreciate that, but we're trying to.
Make it.
In the design guidelines, not make it something, but recognize the mid-century history of us here, that we're in an inner-ring suburb, that that's when we really took off, that we don't want to have something in the downtown that, although we appreciate buildings that stand out, we don't necessarily want to have a collection of unrelated buildings that are not consistent in design and form with one another.
But we are that now. Let's be real.
And we're trying to take those collection of buildings and make them complement one another.
But a city is an organic process. It takes centuries to build a city. We're in that process right now. If the market and the image and the land use doesn't allow this to exist in the future, it won't be there. But take an honest look at this city right now as it exists and help this couple here bring life to Berkeley and support his events.
The use is what we're looking for here. This is a perfect fit for this area of the city. It's exactly what we want to see and we would certainly welcome any sort of artistic studio in this area. That's what we want this part of the city to be. So that, I think, is an excellent fit. I think what I'm just mentioning, maybe Ms. Buckler is as well, is a little bit of change to the aesthetics and to the facade to make it fit more with what we're looking for. It doesn't have to be exactly that. And we can certainly appreciate your need to incorporate some of those items to enhance your paintings and things like that. But we're just asking you to take a second look, I think, at the facade. At least two of us are at this point. Can let the rest of the commission weigh in.
Yes.
I initially didn't prefer this facade, but the more I look at it, the more I find the uniqueness and the total charm of it. And it reminds me of a contemporary building that is being built on Coolidge that maybe didn't fit that part of town well, and it's being built. So I am in favor of this project and I appreciate what you're trying to do to a building that is, I don't want to say an eyesore, but in need of repair.
It's tired. It's absolutely.
It's in need of repair.
Right.
So I appreciate that.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, that whole section, I thought, you know, we would bring it to life and ironically, it's on Prairie, you know? And so, and to bring green space and timber and rock and steel, contemporary windows, Anderson windows everywhere, gables or whatever, have incorporated a fireplace, I don't know, we're going to, you know, really, really chic this up a little bit. So you have the Moose Preserve, you have all these other places that have, you know, do they stick out like a sore thumb or are they unique? And I'm thinking, you know, like I said, we could build a studio anywhere. We don't want to go to Birmingham. We don't want to go, we want to go to Berkeley. And then when Joe said, this is going to be the arts district, I said, this is going to be a win-win for everybody because people are going to talk about, hey, man, did you see this log cabin in Berkeley? And it's just not a runny-down, you know, lousy piece. It's a nice, it's going to be top shelf and people are going to talk about it and people are going to take photos of it and it's going to add talk to the town. For a city that's vying for a piece of the pie, Clausen's upping their game, Ferndale's obviously on a runaway train, I want Berkeley to be that part as well. And to come up with something mid-century modern, mid-century meaning, what, year 50s, 60s? I mean, that's Lincoln Logs. That's rural America. That's Route 66, driving across the United States, staying in log cabins and wigwams, you know? And being Michigan, you can't get any more north, you know? I mean, that's as north as you can go. So Boyne City, you know, I heard that comment. Well, yeah, that's there, but, I mean, you go from Tennessee to New Mexico, we stay in New Mexico, we stay in log cabins. You go to Tahoe, anywhere, anywhere pretty much is, there's something about the charm of a log cabin. Everybody wants to stay in a log cabin. One day we want to grow up, we want to build a log cabin in the mountains. Well, here's a log cabin in Berkeley. So we, by all means, will take everything you have into considerations, but, I mean, this is, this could be the jewel of that whole little area.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners, some additional direction, maybe, Mr. Merritt?
Yeah, I got a couple things. East elevation, you're putting this roof on, how's that impact, how are you handling that transition between the existing building and this building?
Right, if you take a look, I'm convinced we're going to need a fire barrier between. So we have a stepped, we have a stepped masonry wall. Continuation, there's a masonry wall there now. We just put a cap on it and lift it up with the required distance from the roof surface, which is 30 inches, I believe, to the adjacency. So there will be no windows, there's no punctures, there's no interference, there's no impact on the adjacent neighbor whatsoever.
And who owns that wall now?
The folks next door, White Pine.
So you'd have to get their approval to build.
No, 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 it's our wall. It's on our wall. It's our party wall.
Okay, all right, okay. Second question, what's the mezzanine used for?
My own personal clerical, my desk, just to get away from the workspace.
One clean space.
Yeah, a retreat, I guess.
Just looking if it was going to be public use, then accessibility.
One clean space.
Okay. What's the thickness of the logs?
They're just under two inches.
Okay, and you're taking the brick off now?
The brick, the bricks, it's coming off by itself. It has to.
Is it a full brick or half brick?
Oh, no, that's a full brick that's up there now.
Okay.
Right.
I was concerned about projection into the right of way.
That's exactly why we're taking the full brick off. We'll be less than what's there now.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I have for right now.
Mr. Smith?
Let me ask a technical question. Are you creating a snow drift problem with your neighbor to the east with your taller wall?
No, there's a wall there. Marty, we have a way to go to.
You're building above their wall. You're creating a snow drift problem for their roof.
I don't believe so.
I would like the building department to check into that because that's a problem we always have in buildings that are side by side. You're going up, it looks like another six feet. Looks like you're going up another six feet above their roof where they are now. And that's their parapet, so you may be going up higher. So just something, I'd like the building department to double-check.
Well, I think that's advisable.
And it's come up before in town. How is someone going to get in or out of that last parking space to the east? Would it make more sense to flip your whole parking lot?
And put it where?
Flip the parking lot. So your van space is against the wall. Someone who pulls into that spot is going to have to back all the way out to the street to get out of it.
The reason that we did that right now, Marty, you can see an overhead door there. He takes in product and moves it out in trailers and trucks, small trucks. These are little cube vans and small trucks. And so having access to that area worked hand in hand with the accessible space because it could never be occupied. So pulling in and out for his deliveries and accessibility became easier for him. He doesn't have, he doesn't have a lot of, there won't ever be, well, ever is a tough word, but he's not parked here.
I was going to agree with you until it came up, you will occasionally have classes. Now, you know, we talked about parking lot in this town. I think you're underparked because I went through your analysis. I don't know where you got your square footages, but they seem to be a little higher than this.
Math is math, Marty.
Thank you, Joe. You know, art studio is, from where I look on ordinance, should be per 300 square feet, not 400. Storage is per 250 square feet of space, not 500. So unless, you know, it isn't defined where you got these, but I think you maybe need 10 spaces. I'm not going to say you have to have them, but when I hear the word occasional classes and presentations.
Talk about the buses.
That talks about, you know, that tells me that that may happen. So that's something I think the building department should look at. Nice plug on the elevations, showing your building there.
There you have it.
That's nice.
I didn't know.
And you are adding square footage to the existing building with the mezzanine. I know it's a mezzanine, but if I remember correctly, it's more than a third of the space it opens into. So I think we've had mezzanine discussions before. So you are adding square footage. I'm just bringing it up that you may be underparked per our ordinance. Now, on the elevations, you know, this looks residential to me. I understand what you're saying, charm. I understand what my, what Ms. Kepulinski and Ms. Buckler are saying, and I tend to agree with them about the aesthetics of it. The thing I see here is I see a phrase in here that we use all the time in the architecture world, or approved equal. Are you using Meadow Valley siding? Are you using the El Dorado stone? Because when I see approved equal, who's going to approve it if something changes?
He's in the stone.
That is what you're using.
This is what we're using.
So we can strike that or approved equal.
Sure.
On these drawings, okay. But I mean, flags go up when I see things like that on a site plan approval drawings. I know why we use them on construction drawings, but.
Just a question, do we even know what the dome is made up of the last application? Here we are talking about approved equals?
That's not material here.
Wow, okay.
Brass.
It's probably going to be a gold-colored dome, Joe.
It's a brass on the plan.
Joe, don't argue with the planning commission, please. Okay, I'm just bringing up practical things that may or may not be a problem. I want the, I'd like the building department to run through these things. So you're adding a mezzanine, a partial second floor on this building, okay. You've got big, wide, open space inside. That's cool space. But I tend to agree with what we've heard. It's a difficult one to grasp. I would also like to see another look at what the, using these materials, at what the elevations could look like. And I'll leave it at that.
Other comments or questions, Mr. Merritt?
Where are the bike racks located?
The bike racks? Joe?
What's that?
Bike racks.
Where's the bike rack located? I don't see it on the site plan.
Oh, we hit it on one of the iterations. It would be in the corner.
Which corner?
What corner?
There's only one corner.
Prairie and 12.
Yeah, right against the far corner or at the end of the accessible barrier-free space potentially.
Okay.
So we would need to see that.
And just for the information, we came, we had a pre-conference with the planning commission and worked out the parking arrangements with the conference, with the planning department before we got here. I mean, we didn't make this up. This was a joint event with staff. Thank you.
All right, I'm just not seeing it on the drawing, Joe.
Okay.
I'm asking. So we'll need to see that.
Any other comments or questions from the planning commission? Ms. Kempner?
I do tend to agree about the aesthetic as a little teeny-tiny artist in comparison. If I looked at that, I wouldn't be like, oh, I'm going to find art there. It's unique and I like the lines, but even when I first looked at it, I was like, oh, I kind of like the lines of this. I don't know that I love the log siding. So I think I would agree that I'd prefer to see something else there as far as material instead for me personally.
See what they say.
So you're hearing a lot of comments and questions from the commission. Obviously, we have the option to approve or deny or postpone this evening. I don't know that you have the votes for an approval. I assume you don't want a denial.
No.
Would you be open to the idea of postponing this?
Sure, that'd be great, yeah.
And the use is great. We do love the use. I think it's just some refining of some of these elements that we've been talking about.
I just didn't, you know, I wanted to do something beyond cinder block, you know?
And we would like you to do something beyond cinder block.
And I understand mid-century modern, so.
I would just, we have the design guidelines out there. We're not saying that you have to incorporate every single element into them. I would just give it, I would give it a look and see if there's some tweaking you can do to.
Totally take it into consideration, sure.
To use your vision and marry it with those guidelines.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Signage, is there any signage that's going to be on here?
As of now, I don't see the need. I don't, it's not slated for it at all.
How do we know you're there? You're the first one to say you don't need a sign.
I don't need parking and I don't need sign.
You need a special sign.
I really don't. I don't have signage right now.
That's fine, I'm just asking.
It's a place to create, you know? And if we eventually, you know, if somebody wants to come in and take a chorus, I mean, I'll give them an address or something like that, but I don't need any signage at all.
I applaud you for not wanting a sign.
No.
And Ms. Buckler?
One more. I really don't like the fireplace in front.
I love fireplaces.
I love fireplaces, too. I do, I do, I do. I just don't like it in front.
We can go back to cinder block.
That's, no. It's not a either-or. There's some happy media in here.
There you go.
That's a sales area. Sitting soft couches around the fireplace, discuss the sale. That's what that is.
Okay.
Or inspiration, sure, yeah.
Any other comments or motions, Mr. Merritt?
I'm going to pipe in. So I love the idea. I really do. But I keep looking at this and it looks so residential. That's the hangup I have, like bringing up the fireplace. I love a fireplace. It looks very residential in a commercial district. That's what I'm just saying.
I represent my client's interest here.
I know, I understand that.
And if you're going to say that this fellow doesn't have a good idea and he shouldn't come here because we don't like pink, then tell him. Don't look at me and tell you this.
No, I'm just, I'm looking at this and it looks.
Reflecting, I'm doing my job.
When I first opened this up before reading anything, I thought somebody was building a home on 12 Mile. That's what I thought they were, that's what I thought I was looking at. That was my initial reaction to it. And then as I started reading through, I said, okay, this is, this is an art studio and it's very creative, okay? But Ms. Buckler brought up the fireplace and I'm thinking, if that fireplace, move it to the inside wall and it wouldn't look so residential from the outside.
Okay, sure, totally.
Okay? That's a simple change and you still have your fireplace.
Okay.
Get rid of the log. Now you got a building.
You know? And, you know, I like the stone. Uh, I think, I think you could do, you could, you could do this building exactly the way it's designed, with some new, different, maybe some more creative materials. We had folio. They wanted to use that, uh-
They did have that, yeah.
Yeah.
Cedar. That burns cedar.
A similar, similar type of material.
They have a material that's not log, but flat.
Correct.
It's the same stuff. It's just flat. This is a very low-profile-
Yeah, it is a low-profile.
Right, and I-
And I brought in a rusticated piece, and I didn't even want to show you. But I brought it so you could see that we've already made a decision to refine the image, so it doesn't look rough.
And we're not-
I have it right here, but I didn't want you to bring it up, but here we are. We could put a flat surface on this just as easily as a, as the round surface, and I think satisfy his goals and satisfy our goals, as the community is suggesting. I don't have a problem with that. We can lose the fireplace on the front. We can get rid of the two dormers. Let's just let them move on.
Well, I don't think that we have something in, we would need to see what those should just look at, look like. There's the outstanding issue of where the bike rack is that was mentioned. There's the issue of confirming that the parking is adequate. I know you feel very confident that that's the case.
And that over here, and then continue-
But I think that the planning commission would prefer to see some revised elevations before we're ready to move on at this point. That's the general consensus that I'm getting. We haven't made a motion yet. You, you said, sir, that it's fine, that you would be willing to postpone at this point.
Will the fireplace lose the dormers and put flats right there?
Yeah. Initially, we thought we'd go with the big round logs, and then maybe go to the D-logs. And the D-logs protrude, and that really had that sense of, you know, your typical Lincoln Logs. And then we toned it down to this. So, yeah, we could even go to a flatter.
And we're not, the flat versus the smooth, I mean, that's one option that you could look at, and maybe that some of the-
I mean, it's barely a bevel, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe some of that is still there, but, you know, some other materials that are incorporated as well.
Oh, yeah. So, so we can, you know what? I like the suggestion with the, the fireplace. I mean, we could come up with a grand fireplace in the center, go up through it. I mean, he's got to figure it out. He's the architect, but whatever. And maybe something really, really main there, and get some cool mounts on it or whatever.
And I'm not opposed to the dormers.
Yeah.
If you move the fireplace, you could run the dormer across the whole perimeter.
Yeah, like a shed, like a shed. It'd let that, that southern light in, and that might be pretty cool.
All that light in, yeah.
But we're, we're, we're pretty passionate about the look and, and the uniqueness of it. And, and I, you know, if you want us to go back to the drawing board, I don't know what that means in regards to, like, new materials or-
So I don't, I don't think we're saying that you have to start from scratch.
No.
I think what we're saying is to take your idea and, and the look that you're passionate about, and take a look at some of the other buildings around, and try to complement the look of those in some ways, whether it be material, whether it be the roof line, those types of things. I don't know if any of the commissioners have any other ideas, or if your design professional can help you with those sorts of things.
Have you, are you familiar with all the other buildings in that area?
Yes, I understand.
I don't know if I really want to replicate any of those, but-
Is there anything there that you want to see again?
No, I, I think I understand what, I understand what you're saying, but we have a certain massing, right, in terms of the building? So it might not be-
Right.
-the state of the building currently.
So, I mean, so we, we could add neon. We could put a big sign up, and we could-
And I, I, okay. I would say to look at the design guidelines and see if you can't pick a few things out of there to include.
Okay. All right.
That would be my recommendation. Mr. Smith?
Um, wait a second. I, I saw in the, in the, in the, in the comics today, something that's really profound. Walter Gropius was, was, was championed in the comics today. He said that architecture is the true embodiment of democracy. I think that's profound.
Well, we were just at the Louvre. Are you familiar with I Am There?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that pyramid.
Yes, yep.
Sticks out like a sore thumb.
Yes. I, and we can appreciate what you're saying, and we appreciate that you want to have some uniqueness to the building, and we're certainly not saying that that can't be there.
Just want to bring it to Berkeley, that's-
Yeah. And don't start from scratch.
Yeah.
Just make some refinements to come a little bit closer to what I think some of the things that we've been talking about here. Mr.-
One, one very large element that is not identified here is all the glass. What kind of glass are you going to use? I, I honestly would think, as an artist, you would not want a lot of south and west glass.
I, I don't. I want north glass. I want as much north. That's why we have the-
That's what I'm getting at. Great. So what, what is the glass going to be? Because that's not, that's not here presented at all.
What are the windows? Probably Anderson or Appella. Is that what you mean?
No, no, the glass.
Is it translucent?
It's, it's commercial-grade, commercial-grade aluminum thermopane glass with, with, with the film on the inside to cut down the reflection.
Will be tinted glass?
Yeah. It'll be, it'll be shaded.
Okay, because I don't think he wants anything that resembles clear glass.
Oh, no, no. Where I am right now, I'm 100% west, and with the big garage doors, I got these black, blackout shades.
Right, 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 right. Okay.
Yeah, because I just cook, and it's not, it's not proper light.
Okay, that's my question. Tinted glass.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. That's, yeah. We'd totally be able to monitor the-
Not mirrored. Tinted.
That's great.
So you'll be able to see in, then, actually?
Bronze anodized frames.
I don't think you'd be able to see in necessarily.
Well, I mean, that's one of the things that's, if I'm mistaken, one of our ordinances, I have to look and find it, but the windows are not supposed to, like, blacked out completely.
Not, no, with shades.
No, tinted, tinted.
Yeah, with the, with the blinds.
And, and the, there's a couple places I've seen in Berkeley, they put in new windows, and the first thing they do is put up shades on the insides. You can't see in.
Right, yeah.
That's something that kind of, kind of goes on. Um, one last thing, is one, going on with our whole theme of the city of Berkeley, you have some fantastic artwork, I see. I was looking online. I don't see anything incorporated on the outside of it. One thing going on in our city is a lot of art being put on things. That might be an option to incorporate into-
Sure.
-something.
I, I would love to do a mural.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I love the fact that you're putting in money into our city and investing in our city. It's just we're trying to make it the community feel, and that would be something that could possibly tie it together.
Yeah.
That, that's a great idea. And there's that whole opening spance along Prairie, right now, where you just have a blank wall. So that, that would be a place for something like that.
Right. So is this where I modify my vision and comply? Or I don't, I don't know how this works. I mean-
So I would recommend, my recommendation would be that we postpone this item until a future meeting, that you come back with some revised elevations to maybe incorporate the art, maybe get rid of the fireplace, show us where the bike rack is, or move it, I'm sorry, move it. Um, show us where the bike rack is, and then we can all be confident in what we're approving. I, in terms of us making a motion, where we throw in all these random conditions, it doesn't give you good direction. It doesn't give us a clear picture of what we're getting. Um, so that would be my recommendation. If you insist on having a motion tonight, we can see what the, the commission can come up with, but I can't promise you it'll be an approval.
No.
You want to make a call? A phone call? You get your one phone call?
Joe, okay, let me, so, Joe, Joe, I mean, like, I don't, I don't think we need to, number one, I, I, I get some frustration. I get it. And we don't, we don't need any fuel added to the fire. Okay? So the, the point is that there's a lot of interesting decisions about architecture, and I appreciate the architect process. And I, there's a lot of decisions that were made at the time in Berkeley for buildings where they thought it was a unique add. And now we look at them in context of whole, and it's like, they stick out, they interrupt the continuity that we're trying to gain, which helps communities become cohesive. So we want this to be a part of this cohesive vision. It's painful. It's difficult.
Sure.
And a lot of time from the citizens, residents, stakeholders in the community went into those design guidelines as well, and there was, there was a lot of good buzz about it. So we're not saying we don't appreciate the vision. We need some modifications of it. Don't start from scratch. You don't have to completely redo this into, you know, a lime-green, orange, teal, you know, gray, flat roof building. But I think there, I look at this, I see residential. I see west or north, you know? There's a little, little bit of both in there. And it just, it, it's a great building. It just doesn't belong in this corner. But I think with some modifications, it can work, and it can work with the quirkiness of Berkeley without being completely, totally quirky. So, um, that's my say. That's my say. I'm done. Okay.
You might want to reconsider the quirky. I mean, the quirky, there's good quirky.
Yes, no, quirky's good.
Good quirky.
I'm all about quirky.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I live in the quirky space. I'm fine. Okay? So I'm good with it, but I, I just think this needs a little bit, some tweaking.
Okay, well-
Okay. That's my say.
Okay.
So what do we do? What do you want to do?
So are you open to a motion, motion to postpone?
Sure, sure. By all means.
Does someone want to make that motion?
I make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mierad?
I make a motion to postpone to a date.
Next meeting.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
We, if you guys can meet that timeline, we can postpone to the date certain. If you want to just leave it open-ended, I'm sure we can still fit you on the next meeting.
About the 25th, this month. Back in two days.
I'm in Alaska, and I can't make it. Thank God.
So if you want to postpone to the, if you want to postpone to the August meeting, we can do that. If you feel like you can meet that timeline, no problem. If you want to just postpone in general?
No, just, August is fine.
Okay.
Good.
That, that's fine. Does anyone want to second that motion?
I second. I'm the seconder today.
Any other comments or discussion on the motion? Ms. Schulte, could you call the roll, please?
Buckler?
Yes.
Mierad?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kepelinski?
Yes.
Okay, we're looking forward to seeing you back here. We really are looking forward to the use.
I am too. Thank you very much.
Yep. Have a good evening.
You have a motion for a body break?
It does involve a public hearing. I'd like to hear the applicant give a brief overview first, and then we have our planning consultant here to give a brief overview as well, and then we'll move on to the public hearing. So would the applicant like to approach the planning commission and talk about what they're proposing?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Steve Friedman. I'm with DPG Diversified Property Group. We've been involved with this project for a number of years. There's been a variety of iterations of the project. I think we've taken it now down to the lowest common denominator where we were able to keep the existing structure and hopefully retrofit it to some beautiful apartments and some townhouses at the rear of the property. But we're in front of you for a rezone for the school itself because it's currently zoned office, and we're requesting consideration to multifamily, which would make the entire parcel multifamily. It's a simple process that we're going through here with regards to the building. We're keeping the existing building just the way it's been for many, 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 many years, and we're just going inside and converting it to a use for multifamily.
Okay. Mr. Luan, would you like to tell us what a conditional rezoning is and what your recommendation would be for this evening?
Sure, thank you. Doug Luan, I'm with Carla Wortman Associates. I'm the vice president with Carla Wortman Associates and have been with the firm for 26 years. And actually, it's kind of nice to be here. I grew up in Roiloke, so it represents a lot of communities in southeast Michigan. It's nice to be so close to home, or at least my former home. So tonight, we're looking at a conditional rezoning, and I'll start a little bit about what a conditional rezoning is and what the process is. A conditional rezoning, in essence, is a rezoning. So it's a go-through-the-same-process, same public hearing, same recommendation from the planning commission, going to city council. The big difference is that a conditional rezoning does what the name implies. It allows a developer or a property owner to approach the community with a series of conditions that we would not normally get under a rezoning. So a standard or a straight rezoning, once the property would be rezoned, and let's say in this case, the property was rezoned to multifamily, and that's the frontage of the property, anything that's within the underlying zoning district or the new zoning district could occur, and that would be any use that's permitted in the RM district and then any type of building. There'd be no restrictions on the property. I always say when the property gets rezoned, sometimes we get a site plan which really sometimes is interesting to see what the applicant's proposing, but I always tell planning commissions that if the developer walks out of the room tonight, gets hit by a bus, you have a piece of property zoned multifamily, and they can do whatever is permitted in the district. Well, in this particular case, they're requesting conditional rezoning, so they're placing conditions upon themselves. Those conditions, I'll go into those in a few minutes about what those conditions actually are, and the applicant might want to expand upon those. So if the conditions aren't met or the conditions can't be met, this project ultimately would revert or could revert back to the original zoning. That's another kind of unique feature of a conditional rezoning. The other kind of interesting thing is that the planning commission cannot impose additional conditions. So we are only to review and look and/or approve or deny the request that's been brought before you. This is very different than a special land use review, very different than a planned unit development where we can add conditions, or even a site plan for that matter, if the applicant is willing to go along with those conditions. We're pretty much required to look what's in front of us and what the applicant's proposing. So that's really all we're being asked to look at tonight is the rezoning. For those that are here tonight on this request, or those might be reading the minutes sometime in the future, this is not a site plan approval tonight. We're just looking at the zoning component and those conditions that the applicant's willing to place upon themselves. The site plan will come as a full, complete, separate step in front of the planning commission. So that's kind of the background. Is there any questions about conditional rezoning before I get into the review? Yes?
Mr. Smith?
If we make a motion for a conditional rezoning, it is pending the site plan approval or pending the project goes forward, right? Essentially.
Yeah, well, one of their conditions is that it be a multifamily project. So if it's not a multifamily project, under a certain amount of time, the project could revert back to the existing zoning. Now, that time limit is something that the planning commission, you can impose a time limit. You can impose a year time limit, a two-year time limit. Perhaps the applicant has some suggestion of when they would like that time limit to be, but a time limit can be imposed upon when this has to be.
Okay. And a follow-up to that, say this applicant is not successful, not that I'm saying that, and there's a time limit. If there's six, eight months left on that time limit, someone else could come in under the same conditions.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
Mr. Luan, and just to clarify, this is not a negotiation. This is a take-it-or-leave-it offer, correct?
Correct. Exactly.
Mr. Stern?
I'd just expand on that a little. It's take it or leave it, but certainly the planning commission is free to discuss or perhaps suggest or request one or more additional or different conditions, but the applicant would have to agree to that and volunteer to put that in writing. Otherwise, yeah, it is a take it or leave it. We cannot, unlike with the special land use or the site plan, we can't just impose conditions and say this is approved subject to this. You can only approve a conditional rezoning subject to conditions that the applicant has volunteered and agreed to.
Mr. Patterson?
You keep saying could rezon or revert. It's not a guarantee that it would, then? Is there, if their site plan is denied, it doesn't automatically revert back on that timeframe, so?
If there was, the city would have to have a time limit. You'd have to actually put in a time limit. Otherwise, it would just stay conditionally rezoned indefinitely.
Okay.
Mr. Murad?
So if we approved this as a conditional rezon, and then the church decided to work with a different developer to do multifamily in there, they could?
Yes.
Especially if we didn't put a time limit on it?
Yes.
Any other questions on just conditional rezonings? No? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So we did a review of the project, and I'll kind of go through. I won't read word for word, but it's, some of the parts are important, so I'm going to hit each of the highlights here. So page one of our review, we go over what I've just gone over, and that's the conditional rezoning, the language in the zoning-enabling legislation. By the way, conditional rezoning is a relatively, in planning terms, a relatively new thing for Michigan. Came into effect in 2006. Before that time, conditional rezoning was not permitted in Michigan, while it was permitted in numerous other states in the country, but Michigan, a relatively new development in zoning in the state of Michigan. So the applicant has provided a set of conditions, and I will read those conditions for the record. First is the existing building within the property shall be renovated for multiple-family use. This is important because if you look at the RM zoning district, there are a number of uses that could be permitted under multiple-family zoning that aren't just multiple-family. There are single-family uses, there are some office uses, and there are other uses that could occur. So by this condition, the applicant is limiting themselves to a specific use. So they're limiting themselves to only multifamily use. The second condition is that the existing building within the property shall not be demolished, and the footprint of the building shall not be enlarged. So they're committing to keeping the old school. They're committing to keep the school at the footprint and the structure. It will not be torn down. So under this conditional rezoning, if approved, that building would stand as a renovated multifamily building.
Question, please, if I may. Can they go up? Not that they are, I'm just, okay.
It says the footprint shall not be enlarged, should not be demolished.
Footprint tells me it's the foundation of the walls.
Yeah.
We're not playing anything.
But that would be dependent, I would assume, on, I don't know what the height permitted in the RM.
I think there are various on height, don't they?
You're absolutely right. I'm just asking a rhetorical question.
Tremendous cost associated.
Yeah, yeah. But that is not one of their conditions, that they can't go up. So I suppose they probably could go up if they had to, but according to the applicant, that's not what they plan to do. The third item, historic integrity of the exterior of the building within the property shall be maintained. The gymnasium within the building may be renovated to include exterior windows that will be architecturally consistent with the existing windows of the building. So changes within the building, but still trying to maintain the historic integrity of the building. The fourth item, if the developer has not acquired title of the property by December 31st, 2019, the zoning of the property shall automatically revert back to office. So there's a self-imposed time limit. And the fifth item, developer acknowledges that variances will be required in connection with the developer's multifamily project, including but not limited to setback in height variances for the existing building, and any variances will require city approval in accordance with the city's own ordinance. So they recognize that the existing school building is a little too close to the adjacent right-of-ways, as well as the height, so they will need variances for that. So in summary, it's our belief that the applicant is offering to renovate the existing building for reuse as a multifamily development. Historic integrity of the building will be maintained, and the footprint will remain as it currently exists. Any necessary variances discussed more fully herein will be sought. So that's really what they're proposing to do. Our next few pages go through the neighboring land use and zoning. The subject property under consideration is about a 1.5 acre parcel. It is, as mentioned previously by the applicant, and in our review, it's currently zoned office, so it's office service or an office district. The applicant is requesting that to be multifamily. As the planning commission, I'm sure, is aware, the additional properties to the west are currently zoned multifamily, so this property, if rezoned to multifamily, would bring this entire piece along Oxford under the multifamily zoning designation. And you can see from our map on page three, the existing zoning of the site in question and the surrounding properties. One of the things we do mention is that the RM district does have a unit, kind of, it's somewhat of an odd way to calculate units, but it's a total site area divided by 500 gets you a number of rooms that you can have excluding a kitchen and bathroom facilities. And we talk about how many units we think you can get. I think it's between about 15 and 60 units, depending on what the applicant actually brings forward. So one of the big issues with any rezoning, and it's the same issue with a conditional rezoning as it would be for a standard rezoning, is, you know, does the proposal meet the master plan? So that's always, of course, one of the big issues. The city wants to make sure they follow the master plan to the greatest extent possible. And we note that within the current master plan, the subject property is master planned for institutional uses, as is shown on page five of our report on the graphic. And that's due, obviously, because the church is currently there, the church school is currently there, and it's certainly not uncommon when you go through a master planning process to look at the existing land uses and say, it's a church and a school, and it probably should be institutional, without thinking that someday the church might want to sell part of the property and do something different with it. So in looking at the city's amended master plan, master plan amendment, I should say, from February 2017, there are a number of statements and policies, if you will, in that document that would lead me to believe that what the applicant is proposing, while not in concert with the map showing it as institutional, but would be in keeping with some of the things the city's trying to accomplish. And that is, in general, you can see the bulleted points. We've got it, there's a number of issues that are raised within the master plan, but a lot of those come to the idea of providing some additional housing types within the city, some potential additional housing types that might attract various income levels within the city, and just some opportunities that aren't necessarily here. There's a lot of discussion in this part of the master plan amendment that talks about single-family homes and that there's an awful lot of single-family homes within the city, and that we would be looking for some differences or changes that might help with some variety in the types of homes and types of styles of homes. And we believe that the 2017 amendment appears to support the type of housing proposed for the subject property, and thus, while it does not strictly conform to the future land use map, the rezoning certainly does seem to conform to the text within the 2017 master plan amendment. One of the other things we like to look at for a rezoning is what could happen on the property, so we call that development potential. So we look at what could happen on the property as zoned and what could happen on the property as planned by the applicant. So as zoned, it's, as we mentioned previously, this is an office district, so that would permit, you know, wide variety, obviously, of office, medical, business-type uses, schools, colleges, vocational schools, places of worship as it is now, funeral homes, mortuaries, that sort of thing. So all those things would be permitted as currently zoned. So if we look at what's permitted in the RM district, as I mentioned, there's a quite wide variety of uses that are permitted in the RM district because the way the zoning works here in the city of Berkeley is that there's somewhat of a pyramidal zoning scheme where you've got multifamily that then allows some of the less dense districts, you know, all the uses permitted in the single-family district, all the uses permitted in the two-family district. And so there's quite a wide variety of uses here. As I mentioned, that could occur under just a straight RM. I did mention, however, that, as I previously mentioned, that one of the conditions the applicant is proposing is to do a multifamily development. So all, some of the other uses that could be permitted under a standard zoning would not occur under the applicant's condition. And as you see on page six, on the top of page six, I had mentioned, we had calculated approximately 50 to 65 units could occur, depending on how many bedrooms were in the unit. And ultimately, the floor plan, that's provided. Again, one of the other things we look at, and these are all the topics you see in these black bars across our review, is natural resources. So if there are some significant landmark trees or something going on within the property that we would like the applicant to preserve, we try to call those out. Natural resources, if you're driven by the site, there's, you know, there's a fully-developed site with a large parking lot in the back, so there are no traditional significant natural features on the site. With regard to central facilities and services, the site will be served by public sewer and water. This is really more of a, just for me to say, it's going to be served by municipal services. This is a topic that will be discussed in much more detail at the site plan review stage. With regard to site access and circulation, there are two access points, one in Coolidge, one in Oxford, and they're kind of limited to those spots, partly because of the location of the church and how the parking lot works for the church, so we would assume that driveway will maintain in its current condition as well as the access off Oxford. Again, the specific details of site access will occur at the site plan review stage. So a couple of final things that the planning commission is supposed to determine with part of a rezoning, and it's any rezoning, not just a conditional rezoning, and that is the planning commission is required to make findings of fact and submit those finding of fact together with its recommendation to the city council. That's supposed to occur within 30 days of the conclusion of the public hearing. Where the purpose and the fact of the proposed amendment is to change the zoning classification, the planning commission shall make the findings based upon the evidence presented to it in each case with respect to the following matters. And our comments are in bold. So I'll read the, there's just a few of them, and I'll read those finding of fact that the planning commissioners are supposed to meet, that the existing uses of property within the general, or to discuss the existing uses of property within the general area of the property in question. We did that in our earlier part of the review, but the existing land use along the frontage of Coolidge is both, on both sides, is predominantly commercial. Properties in interior of the commercial frontage are largely single-family, with the exception of the Oxford Park Towers that's a bit east of Coolidge. And as much as the balance of the former school is already zoned RM, and that's the west of where the applicant is requesting the rezoning, the rezoning of the subject parcel to RM would not be incompatible with the surrounding land use patterns. This is particularly relevant since the existing building will remain and be redeveloped. The zoning classification of the property within the general area of the property in question, so talking about what's going on around the property, the same comments regarding existing uses pertain to the zoning patterns. The zoning patterns are very close to the land use patterns. Number three, the suitability of the property in question to the uses permitted under the existing classification. Our comments and thoughts here is the conversion of the school to housing, especially in a manner which preserves its historic integrity, is both an excellent and creative reuse of the property. Number four, the trend of the development, if any, in the general area of the property in question, including changes, if any, which would have taken place in its present zoning classification. So is there anything happening within the area that might be of impact or question with the current request? Our comment is, in general, there are a trend for a variety of multiple housing, multiple-family housing. There's a trend generally. The February 2017 master plan amendment recognized the lack of housing diversity in the city and speaks about the need for additional multiple-family the city and speaks about the need for additional multiple-family housing. The resolution adopting the master plan amendment concludes that diverse housing stock will provide quality housing opportunities to residents regardless of age, ability, or income. Rezoning the subject site would be a logical location for multifamily and would be a creative use of an obsolete school building. That's our opinion. The fifth item is the objectives of the current master plan, and we had already talked about that specifically with the 2017 master plan amendment. City planning commission should not recommend the adoption of proposed amendment unless it finds that the adoption of such amendment is not detrimental to the public interest. Planning commission may recommend the adoption of an amendment changing the zoning classification of the property in question to any classification less intensive than that requested by the applicant. So you can actually do something different than what the applicant's requesting. It's our conclusion that the rezoning to RM residential multiple, particularly with the conditions offered by the applicant, would not be detrimental to the public interest. In effect, a creative reuse of the existing school would provide needed housing and preserve the historic integrity of the building. So if there's any questions about the conditional rezoning or our comments in question, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you. I think we'll move on to the public hearing now and then we'll let you know if we have any questions. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak on this item? If there is, I'd ask you to sign in on the sheet provided next to council member Gavin. Just a reminder, you're limited to four minutes and that we will take notes but will not engage you in discussion. Is there anyone that wanted to comment on this item this evening? No one? Okay. We will close the public hearing on this then and move on to commission discussion. Who would like to start? Mr. Smith?
The, the conditions D, if developers not acquired title of property by December 31st zoning, now that's self-imposed. That's, is that your agreement with the archdiocese or is that getting your project through site plan approval?
Could you please step up to the podium when you answer questions? Thank you.
And the reason I ask, that's four months. We should. I mean, I, there's no reason it couldn't happen. But that seems like a tight schedule. Just, I'm just throwing that out. So. As, as a self-imposed condition, it seems.
Yeah. It just seems like, given the fact that the building is already there, then we have a conversion in place of the space to 55 or 56 units, that we're not seeking the building permits, we're just, and we're going to show a site plan that's revised that shows enough parking to accommodate the 56 units. You know, we're not asking for variance for two parking spaces per unit. It just doesn't seem like there's that much to really put in front of you for a variety of modifications or changes because we're not really changing anything.
Okay. Just curious, it's a short, it could be a short.
It's short, it's short. But I mean, it's, we're not, the buildings, exactly, we're not touching the building except for replacing windows that, we're going to make them look the same as the existing windows that are there. We've got the same access points and we're going to redo the whole parking lot to accommodate the requirements for storm drainage and all the requirements and two parking spaces per unit. I mean, it doesn't get any simpler.
Shouldn't, no. You're right.
Not adding, you know, last time we were here, we were making it 27 stories high and we were having.
I didn't want to bring up.
Lots all over the place and we were having, you know, so I mean, it was like.
I didn't want to bring up a history.
I don't mind bringing it up.
You're right.
This is like.
Assuming.
As simple as it gets.
Exactly. There's a lot, there were a lot of encumbrances on the last place.
Oh, without a doubt.
That's a long word, but there's a lot of things going on that.
Without a doubt.
It frustrates me that he doesn't have something to comment on.
By the way, I'm smarter than that. And I'm sure he'll have stuff to.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, well.
It's saying he has title to the property, which means the transaction of purchase would be completed by the 30th.
Right, but I don't want us to, if something happens, us impede that.
Let's just move quickly.
We can do that.
I'll give you everything you need. Let's just move quickly.
Glad we started at seven o'clock now.
We won't have any confrontations. We'll just get it done.
Honestly, the only other comment I have is on the rezoning agreement. Item C says property, property currently contains an office building. I think it's really a school building. I don't know if that's typo or if it really matters, but it's just.
Where are you seeing that?
Which page?
Page one of the conditional rezoning agreement. And I don't think that matters.
It probably means office zoning.
Yeah, he's talking about in the recitals and I think.
The recital, yes, sorry. I didn't say that.
Typo?
Probably a typo. Instead of saying an office building, it probably should say a school building.
But, yeah, but a zoned office.
A school building's own office. I think the idea here is we're trying to, your attorney was trying to state what the, what the use has been. And it hasn't been an office, it's a school. Hey, but that's a minor thing. We can work that out. That's a no-brainer.
That's the biggest question I have, but I'm done. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Again, we just want, we just want to do it, we've heard all the, all the different arguments through the years. It, we finally, you know, you guys hit us over that hard. You want to keep the building, we're going to keep the building. We're going to put in housing so that we can get people active in that area to help the businesses that are there and the ones that are coming. We're going to build some stuff in the back as well for sale. So it's not all multifamily rental. It's some's rent, the front's rental, the back is going to be for sale, townhouse-type product. That's, I believe, allowed in, within the multifamily zoning. We're just trying to keep it simple. We just want to get this thing for the benefit of the archdiocese, for everyone that's been involved, so that we can move this forward. You know, this is, we're trying to keep it simple.
Perfect.
Ms. Buckler?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Anyone?
So, I've got a question. So the process, if this is approved tonight, then you go before the ZBA for, for height variance?
And there's a small setback on Oxford.
So I think this would go to the council next, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. And then ZBA and then backed us for site plan.
Correct.
Yep. And just so you know, we, we have progressed internally. We're already, you know, whether we're smart or not, we've already got the plans in action. We got everything in motion so that we can meet these timelines, you know, and put it in front of you so that we can get this thing done.
Can those things all run concurrently? Because, you know, it all depends on what the calendar is.
And I would assume the council would have to approve before they go to the ZBA, is that correct?
Yes.
You have to have something to, yeah, they have.
I think that's right, but there may be a way to get the wheels.
That's.
Could the ZBA and the site plan?
Pencil it in on an agenda type of thing, yeah.
Could the ZBA and the site plan run concurrently?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Although it'd be a mute decision on the site plan if the ZBA doesn't.
Right.
But still, we can.
And that's really more up to the planning commission. I know sometimes planning commissions, they don't have to, but they like to see all the variances in place or at least acted upon before you look at the site plan. But the law doesn't require it to be there. I mean, you could, you could do one before the other, but what Ms. Buckler said is true, the approval of the one would be contingent on the approval of the other.
I mean, we could approve the site plan with the condition that the ZBA grant the required variance. Because they're not building anything.
Yeah, subject to the ZBA granting a variance.
If there's no major variance, if there's no major variances on the new construction, it's an existing building.
Yeah, you know what you're getting at.
So, yeah, we can figure out a way to efficiently move it through the process.
Okay. Mr. Murat?
Matt?
Sir?
City council meeting, the next one is when?
Week from Monday. August 12th.
12th, and then ZBA is the 19th, right? Don't they meet on Monday?
I would have to check my calendar. They, they run all one days, first and second. So that sounds about right. So that would be the.
And then we'd meet the 27th, so that's possible.
Could we meet the notice requirements at that point for the ZBA?
Probably not, no. So it'd probably be September.
Yeah, you need a couple of weeks advance on the notice. There's no, there's no cutting corners on that.
But they could go before the ZBA. We don't want any corners cut. We want all notices put out properly. We want, we want this to happen.
So, yeah, so ZBA could be September and then our meeting in September.
You guys are really getting ahead of yourself.
No, I'm just, I'm just. Guys have to vote first. I'm doing it for their sake to see, can the December 31st?
So I think they, they understand that there's a clock and there's some hoop jumping and they have, it looks like a group of very competent people to figure out the sequencing of those hoops.
And they're not asking that by December 31st they have site plan approval or anything. They're saying that they have the building under title, which means they've bought it.
Right.
And they should know in the ZBA and then.
Ms. Kepner, did you have something to add?
I guess I was just going to ask us if we wanted to impose a date where it would go back from conditional rezoning. I can see an argument either way because I like this idea and if they don't do it and somebody else comes through.
But they've said it as December 31st.
No.
No, if I may.
Ms. Kepner?
I, if, if Ms. Kepner hadn't suggested that, I was going to, I think Mr. Luan brought that up early on. We're really talking about two different things. There's the one condition that the, the applicant, Mr. Friedman, has volunteered here, and that is the, if they don't close on their property and obtain title by December 31st of this year, then it would revert back. But I think you also need a deadline after that, whether it's two years, three years, whatever's reasonable. The idea isn't to hold a gun to the developer's head and make them move faster than they want to, but the idea is to have a deadline so that you don't have property that is permanently and irrevocably zoned for something that is never going to happen. So you want to have that, that deadline when it's clear that the project isn't moving forward and the city will have the ability to relook at the zoning and change it back or change it to whatever you want to change it to. I'm thinking something at least a couple of years out.
Do you tie that deadline to a site plan approval, to construction permits, to completion of the project, to all of those things?
It can be any of those, but it's typically, typically would be something, I generally think in terms, and Mr. Luan might help with that too. I think in terms of, of substantial completion or obtaining of a, the certificate of occupancy for the project.
So then, let me ask a technical question, kind of as a follow-up to that. So if, if the project were to be started and halfway finished, then does the zoning revert back to office and then you have a halfway finished multiple-family building? I'm just envisioning the Great Recession and how everything kind of.
Wasn't such a great.
And you did have half-finished projects.
Yeah, if I could answer that to a certain degree. So in the, the enabling legislation that allows conditional rezoning does indicate that the applicant can request extensions upon, upon approval of the city. So if they ran into problems and they bumped up that two limit, two-year time limit or whatever limit you guys put on them, and that is something, that's the only condition you guys can place in a conditional rezoning is that time limit.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say, the, the idea, again, isn't to, to, to hold a gun to the developer's head and to say, oh, gotcha, you didn't get that, that last board nailed in, in time. The idea is to give us flexibility in the event that the project's clearly been terminated, clearly been abandoned, it is not proceeding, but yet we have this property that's now encumbered by this rezoning. We want to have the ability to be able to revisit it, to undo it. And that's why I'm saying you, you, you put it out there far enough where the developer will clearly have the ability to, you know, move forward reasonably with, with, with the project, but not so far out. You're not going to want to put it 30 years out or something like that.
What I would suggest is that my attorney and your attorney sit down and think this thing through so that we have something that makes sense for both parties. Okay? Which is sort of how we got to the conditional rezoning concept to begin with. I think we should follow through with that and have them orchestrate the proper documentation that is acceptable to both sides.
Yeah, and I would think, I mean, that's, that's fine, but I think we just wanted to get an idea that, does the planning commission agree that there should be that additional deadline in there? And what I would want to do is, again, working with developer's attorney to build that right into the, the agreement here. We'd add it as another numbered paragraph so that it's self-contained.
Yeah, and one other item on conditional rezoning is, is that the law, and I'm not a lawyer, but the, the law and the enabling legislation is very brief about conditional rezonings. And it talks about a reversion, but there has been a lot of discussion since the law was written about what that actually means. So just so the planning commission is clear, it's my understanding that the property doesn't just automatically revert. You've, there has to be a, there has to be a rezoning process in a public hearing held. And so you'll have to go.
Like a reverse rezoning almost?
Yeah, you'll have to, and then at that point, the city could rezone it, it could revert back to the underlying district that it was before, or technically, the city could rezone it to any district that they saw fit at that time.
Now, I, I agree with that, but the, the law says what it does, but I have consistently advised municipal clients on this. If we ever get to that point, we would want to just to have, you know, public notice, transparency, a clear paper trail, however you want to put it, that we would, at the appropriate time, go through the rezoning process all over again, either to undo it or, as Mr. Luan suggested, you know, who knows? You might decide it should be something else altogether. Or there may be another applicant who comes forward who has yet another idea for the property. But the idea at this point is that's all academic and we'll never get there because we have an applicant who intends to move forward with the project. But we're just talking about putting that deadline out there just in case, for whatever reason unforeseen right now, it doesn't proceed, we have a way out of this and can revisit the zoning.
Okay. Anything else we found there?
Yeah. And if planning commission is fine with, with, with that concept, I'll work with the developer's attorney to add something to the proposed conditional zoning agreement along with that other change that we're going to make, changing whatever, changing office to, to school. And we'll get that polished up before it comes back to council and certainly before the site plan would come back to this body.
Mr. Patterson?
So, so we could approve or deny tonight, not, we wouldn't have to postpone until that's clear and added with this.
No.
That's correct. You, you could move, you're actually moving to recommend tonight. You could move to recommend approval to council, subject to the changes that were discussed being made.
So generally, per all of the items outlined in the Carlisle-Wartman report, this, this does seem to meet the standards for rezoning, at least in my opinion. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels. I think I know, but we'll see. I don't have any additional questions. Does anyone else have any additional questions or comments? Would anyone care to make a motion, a recommendation?
I'll try.
Okay, Mr. Murat?
So I'd like to recommend approval of PRZ 0119 with the following conditions. And rezoning agreement, there's, we need a correction on the building usage, right?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, in, in the recital in item C.
See, right here. Sorry. Right, right here.
Off the building.
Yeah. So that's school, right?
Correct.
And then also add, add that.
Also, it's in B too.
No. It is office. It is zoned office now. And then also add a deadline determined by, by city attorney.
And applicant's attorney.
Applicant's attorney.
Agreed to by the board.
Agreed to, yeah.
We're trying to sound so legal here.
I know.
Do we have some reference, this finding of fact?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that we maybe include something that says because of or due to the findings of fact outlined in the Carlisle-Wartman report, just so that we have some sort of record. And everyone agrees with those, I think?
Yeah, I agree with that too.
I'll second.
Okay.
What he said.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? Questions?
Do we want Aaron to read it back to us?
If you want.
No, we don't have to.
I've got it on videotape.
Yeah, you got it on videotape.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. Can you please call the roll then, Mr. Chutel?
Buckler?
Yes.
Murat?
Yes.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Keppner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kopalansky?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yep, good luck at city council.
Now I can stop answering people's questions. What's going on with the last?
I don't know.
Okay. Moving on then, that brings us to liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
Briefly, yeah. Chamber, they had a very successful street art festival, and they are now focusing on Cruise Fest, which will be the 16th of August.
Yep.
And then also the Berkeley Pub Crawl, which traditionally has always been on a Thursday night. That's going to be the Saturday after the Dream Cruise from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Oh, early.
Yeah.
17?
Yeah.
No.
After, 24.
Okay.
Same as the Irish Fest?
No, Irish Fest is in September.
He says it was after Dream Cruise.
Nope.
Okay, that's good to know.
The Pub Crawl has traditionally been the Thursday after Dream Cruise weekend.
Much better for the hangover.
In regards to the, have you finished? I'm sorry.
Yep, I'm all done.
DDA, I mean, the, they approved the Mogo project, which is presented to us in front of us today. There was new appointments to the committee, which was bone of contention for many things, and obviously Vivian stepped down, unfortunately, and they'll be looking for a new executive director.
Okay. Anything else? No? Commissioner and staff comments? Mr. Murat, anything?
I'd like to welcome our new plant, the new community development director and our new board member, our commission member.
Commission member, yeah. Mr. Trotto?
I'm good.
Mr. Campbell, anything?
Pleasure to be here.
Just welcome to the new members.
I would echo that.
Same here.
Everyone? Yeah? Yep.
One question. If the city manager has information, what's happening with the former Holly Market siding? That keeps coming up month after month after month. Anything to report? I also echo welcome.
That's the siding issue.
Yeah, so I was digging into that issue a little bit today and getting some history and some background. So the former community development director had reached out to the property owner. I just found out today, he is actually going out of town to Poland for foreseeable future. He's involved in some family stuff. So as soon as he returns, he and I are going to actually touch base on another project that he's got going on. So I'm compiling a list of some of the outstanding issues. He's kind of a repeat customer. So I'm kind of compiling some of the issues that he's got going on. So as soon as he returns and he wants to talk about project A, we can talk about B, C, D, and so we can start working on getting that, getting those things worked out.
Okay, and what you don't know, since it's your second day, is I'll be asking this every month.
Well, to be fair, to be fair, when, when I started here, I went back and looked at the planning commission meetings from the last couple of months, so I knew this one was coming up.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do think it's impressive, though, that on day two, she already has the gentleman fleeing the country to, that shows truly a new sheriff in town.
All the way overseas, yeah.
Anything else from staff? No? Good?
I do have one question. In regards to the site plan review, special land use reviews, do you like to see some sort of formal written document, or has an oral presentation been sufficient for your, for you as a body?
I think we all really appreciated the report we got this week.
Yeah.
I very much did.
I like the hell out of it.
I'm a big fan of the written reports, so.
Very much so. And I like them printed in our packet to pick up.
You will be, you will be getting them, and then, you know, I can give you a summary and, as well as to the public, but I wanted to get your impressions on what you would like to move forward, so.
Very nice.
Expect to see those in the coming weeks.
And I also liked in this packet how the notes for each of the different items were separate pages. Right. Because what I, what I ended up doing this time is going through and just clipping it all together, so that it's right there when I'm.
I did totally miss not having it in electric format, though, because spreading out some of them.
The big plans, yeah.
He sent out a dot, little dots.
The big plans.
Yeah, but they didn't have the plans in them.
Oh.